Okay. Senator Wayne, Deputy Administrator Harris.
All right, thank you. We're going to do a lot more listening than talking today and I think hopefully some validation. But one, I just want to let you know we are not at RPU because we have moved here in our transitioning through our construction schedule. This is really because we're meeting on a Tuesday. The county has the chambers on Tuesdays and Thursdays, so when that happens, just as a note, we have to find somewhere else to meet. But thank you for being here tonight. We just wanted to wrap around on two of your previous conversations to City Council's strategic priorities as well as some of the rules conversation you have. So just looking at the guidance as we bring these forward to you that meets your expectations. So first and foremost, I think the city vision and all the strategic priorities as well as the foundational principles, I thought the last time you all talked about this, there was a fairly strong amount of alignment. And I'm just going to go to the strategic priority slide, Jess. There's a fairly strong amount of alignment within that space. And maybe the one open question was really in this environmental stewardship area. And so we have the original language as well as some alternate language. The original language really just focuses on our role in environmental stewardship as an organization. The alternate language kind of tries to pick up that conversation that the council had in terms of whether that extends into the community. So maybe two things. One, if there's alignment and agreement on the part of the council that all those other items, the vision, foundational principles, and these strategic priorities meet your expectations, and then which environmental stewardship option you prefer. So I'll turn the conversation over to you for that.
Why don't we start with all of the other strategic priorities besides responsible environmental stewardship? Anything that folks want to add to those? Councilmember Miller.
I just have a question. In the report, there is an additional strategic priority, robust public safety, that's not in the slides. Can you?
Yeah, so if you go back to the foundational principles slide, Jess, we've really left robust public safety in the foundational principles. Yes.
Any other administrators?
I just want to point out on the other slide, I'm pretty sure it's reversed, that the original language is the alternate language. So just if that's confusing to anyone, it's fine. I mean, they're both in there.
Option A or option B?
Yes.
Councilmember Palmer?
Yeah, the housing access to me is just a general statement that we like housing. Before, we had that we wanted to have homeownership. And this is basically, yeah, I like housing, which I think everybody agrees that that's important. The Maxwell study says we're doing well with apartments. We are way, way behind in homeownership, and I think that that kind of waters that down.
So I can maybe offer one piece of perspective here, and I should have maybe provided this context going into it. We're trying to get to your broader priorities. And previously, you had affordable living. And within affordable living, you made your top goal owner-occupied housing, right? I mean, we did that year to year to try to put definition and emphasis in those areas. What we're working toward, and then we'll talk more about this in a moment, is let's identify what those strategic priorities are. If housing access captures it or doesn't capture it, I think that's what we're here to understand. Then we're going to talk about what does housing access look like and mean to you. And as the staff goes forward and develops an action plan, if you want to anchor that in owner-occupied affordable housing, I think that's the direction we're looking for. Then we would try to bring you back an action plan that had goals and actions that tried to accomplish that.
Other thoughts on that one? I like range of housing types there. I think it keeps it open. And Councilmember Palmer, I don't know that the rest of us has seen the revised Maxwell study, so I'm not sure if that goal is still as strong as it was in the first iteration of the study.
Well, it is. And I don't know why you haven't seen it. Should have sent you. But to me, you talked about all types of housing for all, to meet the needs of all residents. I don't know how you achieve that.
Other thoughts? Councilmember Miller?
I'll just add, when I think about housing access, I think about our residents who are not necessarily permanent residents when they arrive, and access to housing as an important piece. People who might be in situations where they're not ready to buy a house and maybe don't even have a job offer that's long enough to consider homeownership. And as we grow as a community, as May of Clinton grows, I don't want us to lose focus on the variety of residents and types of people in our community and what their goals are. And so I like that housing access is broader. I think that within our action steps, I would wonder how we're focusing on homeownership as a component of housing access. But I would not be in favor of limiting the entire strategic priority to only homeownership.
Just offer some, another, going back in the We Back Machine, January, the first thing there also was like, what do you want to continue to be true about the city 10 years from now? And what do you hope to be true 10 years from now? So I think the way that these are written is intended to be aspirational, recognizing that we're going to have to get to some more specific steps and prioritize those steps based on resources and other things. So definitely a point I'll take from Palmer about like, how do you achieve that? Is it achievable, maybe is another way of considering it. And I think the framing for the strategic priorities, like the high level, was intended to be aspirational for a future state, recognizing there's going to be steps within that. So just maybe another also way of thinking about the strategic priorities. Doesn't mean it shouldn't change, but just.
Councilmember Keen?
So my comments, we went from three strategic priorities to five, and that's reasonable. I think I did hear most of these things in the discussion. I'm not kind of prioritizing all of them. The two that jump out at me as like driving the action plans are the stewardship, environmental stewardship, and housing. I actually grouped together the other two, economic resilience and inclusive growth management. I'm actually struggling a little bit, like if I do the little test, say if we went to four, or if we went to six, which one comes off, which one goes on? Those two still sort of bother me that they're similar. The other one I want to talk to is the transformational capital projects. We sort of have it tucked at the bottom, but the idea of having this in the strategic priorities is, you know, making sure that when we go to these other action plans, we don't start just assuming those projects are done and start talking about what are we going to be doing? So I don't like it visually down at the bottom. I don't want to, I don't want to wordsmith and play games. Yeah, I don't want to play games with that. But that's my input. The two real action ones are that idea of like housing. And I really do like, not just the types, but promote policies that I think we have to be careful that we don't just say our housing thing is a spending priority. It is a policy priority.
Yeah, I would just acknowledge, when you all align around these strategic priorities, you're going to get some great graphics and nothing will be at the bottom. They'll all. I would just need to offer up on the economic resilience and inclusive growth management. Because I think that's going to be something, at some point, we're going to bring you projects and we're going to say, well, what fits into that category? And economic resilience is very much about, you know, how can we diversify the economy? So next week, you'll have an agenda item on the bio lab, that conversation that came out of DMC. That would be the goal of, you know, investing in the life science economy, the med tech, and trying to see like, what can we spin off for additional and different businesses in Rochester? Whereas inclusive growth management could be any number of things, just in terms of, you know, how do we extend infrastructure out of the community? Our equity in the built environment initiatives, anything in those spaces, you know, would align nicely, you know, in a category like that. So maybe just to give you some reflections on what might land in each of those in today's projects, I think.
Okay, thank you.
Other thoughts? Councilmember?
One other question about inclusive growth management. I received a question later in the week, last week after this had come out about asking, were we leaving behind other aspects of affordability? And I wonder if you read, and if we read collectively into inclusive growth management, that part of that community need is accessible access to city amenities, to services like transportation that are part of the affordability piece but not housing? And I think the deeper question was, we're not leaving those priorities behind, right? Maybe, I read them here, and I just am curious if, from the staff perspective, if they're here or if they're missing?
Yeah, I think when we get to the next part of the conversation of hearing from your perspective, you know, what does success look like? What, you know, would bring these priorities to life? I think that's going to be helpful for us to understand that. And if efficient land use and transit systems that can support new and future development as part of that, you know, we would try to carry that forward in the action plans that we bring forward for you.
Maybe just also add that I also try to look at the foundational principles with that, so thinking about all of these with the framework of what we, fiscal responsibility and sustainability. So I see that one especially as being pretty eye-ranging and how we think about what growth management looks like. The support for me is like thinking about what are the impacts of growth, right? And non-growth. And that's why I've got the trade-off challenge.
Other thoughts? Are we ready to tackle responsible environmental stewardship? Thoughts on that?
I'll just say, you know, I would prefer the, it says original, but I think it was the alternative language. But it also promotes responsible environmental action throughout the community. I think, you know, part of that is policy setting. What kind of policies do we have as a city? And how, policies aren't always just how a city staff responds, it's how the community will respond as well. So I like the broader description. I also think it mixes well with our sustainability and residency committee and the work they want to do and do do, that it moves them out of just doing things that focus on our city staff, but also things that focus on the community impact.
Other thoughts?
I like the broader one as well. And I think of city operations and like weatherization programs, which partly touch RPU but partly touch gas usage, which is not a city operation, but is a benefit that ultimately lowers energy use, energy intensity in settings. And I read those kind of programs and the alternate, the expanded version versus the limited city operations version.
Councilmembers?
I would tend to agree with Councilmember Miller and Mayor Morton on the original language, the broader definition seems to make a lot of sense to me. I also think it is imperative for us as a community to reach out to the members of our community to model responsible environmental stewardship. And that seems to can't capture more of that idea of modeling than the alternative language or the original language, however we want to talk.
I'm not getting a mouth set. Yep.
Councilmember Keen?
I guess I looked at those coming in and expected that's where we do, and I think it does match some of the things we've talked about. Again, my warning here to the group would be, it's not like by adding more to the strategic priorities that you have more investment in those things. You have the same amount of investment, you just are diluting it more. And your level of impact you can have on city operations is probably more dramatic than what most people think. And by saying it's also the community now, I don't think that means we're doubling our investment, we're just spreading it across more things. So.
As we go through all. Just to clarify, did you, did you kind of weigh in on those two?
No, I thought from our discussion from back in February, I would have thought the thing that's written up in front of me as alternate language would end up covering it. We talked about a lot of programs in 2023 and 2024 that really were more of that idea of promote responsible environmental action throughout the community. We talked about a lot of things like that. So I'm good with that language. My point wasn't which one you choose. It's don't choose more to think that means they're going to get more investment. It's the same amount of investment.
Got it. Other council members? I'm just conscious that staff wants to get a read from the entire council because we can have this discussion now, or we can have it when it comes to the regular city council meetings. So if we can have this discussion now, staff gets a sense of, you know, where the majority of council members lie than during. Any other council members? I tend to, in looking at them, and I've gone back and forth on both of these, and I'm hearing Councilmember Keen and the mayor's thoughts on really incorporating the sustainability committee. I'm good with the, what's currently called the alternate language. I think it's strong about talking about city operations, but then it kind of brings in the community. So that's where I'm.
And partially because it came up.
Can you speak up just a little?
Sure, partially because it came up during the week of public participation that a few of us in the room are at, is just reflecting back to the transformational projects. What I'm hearing is, it's important for the team to remember, regardless of what ends up in the strategic priorities, that it is important to deliver as it is to like engage, inspire, and consider what's next. Do not forget that we also have to deliver service and deliver projects while we're thinking about the future. And that when I hear the alternate language for environmental stewardship, I'm also hearing, I guess louder than something else, that how do we encourage the community to act as a community? That your individual actions, like the individual impact, whether that's through a city program or otherwise, is something that we should be inspiring people to consider, part of, be part of civic movement if you're so inclined. And then that becomes like a multiplier to what we might do in our own projects. So that and all. Not that that's all you do, but that's kind of the discussion that I'm hearing.
Thank you.
I just add, another question of funding and resources has come up. We also have taken initial steps related to gas franchise fees. And I think about sort of the policy guidance that some of these provide and looking beyond just city operations also perhaps provides clarity and opportunity to have a discussion about funding sources, including that one. And I also appreciate that within housing access, that we're talking at the policy level and not just what are we investing in to create individual units of housing, but what are the policies that support additional housing access?
Yeah, I'll just add, I think if you look at like the resilient economic vibrancy, there too, it's not just city policy. It's working with local businesses, just like we would work with our community to build the community that we want, not taking it all on government. We have our role for sure. As policymakers, we have our role for sure. We also need a partner. And I think that's the language that we're seeing in several of these. And I don't think they're going to get wrong with that. In fact, I think it's a good.
Other thoughts on strategic priorities? The next time we see these will be, Councilmember Keen?
Observation, just that we talked about, you know, affordable living and we had the housing stuff under there. When we went to foundational principles, we really didn't move affordable living. I think we have things like quality services and fiscal responsibility. I think they're covered there, but if we could, yeah, spend it before, I think the right thing to do is spend the amount of time we're doing right now on strategic priorities. But I did want to go back and remember when in these same discussions, these are foundational, considered more like at rock prior to looking at the strategic priorities.
Thank you.
It's like a good way to think about these, is this is the how you're going to do things and the strategic priorities are the what you're going to do. And so just use that as a lens. And as we go through all the action planning, and we're going to talk about areas where we lead and clearly have a lot of agency, and then we'll talk about other areas where we partner and support, you know, and encourage. That's just a different dimension. You just have to understand sometimes, you know, we are in a great place to effectively change, and other times it's encouraging others to hopefully, you know, go the direction you want. You know, obviously inclusive decision-making, you know, here is new, quality services was moved up again, just as a value, like everything we do, we want to, you know, be high quality. So I think, again, this is the how we're going to do things and very thanks for it.
Any thoughts on the foundational principles? Any further thoughts on the strategic priorities? So Mr. Paris, we will see these next on our regular council meeting agenda?
Not the second, but the second meeting in June is when we would bring these forward for just overall endorsement. And then we will work on the action plan and bring that forward at a later date.
Okay.
First, we're going to work on the action plan.
First, we're going to work on the action plan, yeah. So, and again, this is really just initial, Councilmember Miller talked about the natural gas franchise fuel, get to that later. But if that's an area you want us to focus and work on in that space, you know, this is the kinds of things we'd want to hear now. So we bring an action plan forward to you that it aligns with your perspective. Of course, we have a great and talented team of staff members that are going to try to take these and bring you forward, you know, and enrich your ideas as well as bring some new ones. If you want to flip through the next couple of slides, Jess, that'd be great. But we just want to go through each strategic priority and really hear your perspective on anything you want to make sure we take into consideration as we advance an action plan. So again, economic resilience, this is about diversifying the local economy, making sure the economy is resilient and supporting a wide range of people. And so really just turn it over to you all for ideas in this space that we can consider as we bring the action plan forward.
Well, I think the mayor said it perfectly. I think it's really about our role as leaders in the community and our tentacles connecting with the business infrastructure and looking for ways to partner throughout the community and beyond Rochester. And so anything we can do to facilitate that and from the city role or our roles as individuals as well, I think adds to that. So regional cooperation.
And I think a lot of it is part of the shift, yeah.
Yeah, and I'll just add, you know, one of the things a couple of years ago that I brought forward as part of the budget, and we haven't really had funds for it, is really that focus on our, on business. We have many, many cities across the country have a, either a small business or an economic development department. We don't really have that here. Maybe we're not quite big enough to have it. But it certainly is something with all the growth that we're having, we have to focus on for the reasons we have the business forward strategy, for reasons that during the pandemic, we got together, right? So I think the city does have a role to play here, and as we're growing, I think it needs to be more of a focus of ours. So while we're not in the place perhaps right now to create a new budget, I did have appreciated the support from the city to designate staff who kind of wear that hat right now. And I think it's important that we continue to do that, that we have someone that the business community knows is there for them and consider, you know, where this might take us in the future. I don't think we're there yet. I don't, I don't think we have the budget for it, you know, post-pandemic and what have you, but I do think it's something we need to.
Agreed.
How it would look.
It's a pretty active conversation of the staff, like what are the roles and responsibilities? And how do we achieve alignment in terms of how we do economic development? It's a very relational line of work. But at the same time, you know, we have a role as a city and how do we, how do we execute well in that space and ensure that we have a whole city perspective? You know, we have great emphasis on certain folks in the downtown and some people that have an emphasis greater than Rochester. You know, we also need to ensure that we have a Rochester-focused perspective as well. And I think that's definitely something that's on the team's mind.
Can you, to that, to that point, can you talk a little bit more about our relationship as a city to Ready in particular, and maybe other economic development agencies out there? I know administrators, I believe, sit on the Ready building.
Yes, and that's been kind of a change from here. So I guess, back on the last week, what's just one of the key things that you were talking about is how do you get more civic engagement around like economic mobility and economic resilience that is at sort of a community scale of Rochester? We're not the same community as any other community. We have an anchor institution, but we also have a lot of other things that would benefit both anchor institution and others. So Ready, we have a contract with, we support Ready in general as Rochester Area Economic Development, Inc. And of course, they have investors, they're an investor. We do provide some annual operating funds. We also have an agreement for them to operate the 2013 sales tax that were dedicated towards development opportunities for base business. Those all have to come through the city council, and they have to meet state law for business subsidy. Of course, you get a business subsidy if you're not going to do any of those types of things. So Rochester Area Economic Development, Inc. has a very specific role in the economic ecosystem, but then you have other providers. So the Small Business Development Center is now housed with Ready, and they provide their financial support, used to be RCTC. And then you think, okay, well, education has a role if we're talking about workforce development, which isn't something that we used to really focus on as a community, but it's come up a lot more over the last five or six years, not just in Rochester, but it's challenging for some of our business community to actually get workforce, including the larger institution of Mayo Clinic. So then we get into the spectrum of not just workforce development, but how are we generating economic mobility? How do you connect different businesses? You have Collider also, that's a newer to the space of economic development. Workforce Development, Inc., does workforce development, but maybe in a more traditional way than Collider is doing, for a different type of sort of business and workforce development. So thinking about how all of those different groups from higher ed to, and the newer focus of Rochester Public Schools is really focused on those 66 steps to being able to be prepared for a career, whatever that might be like for someone, which might be their different career than someone that's wanting to get their doctorate than it is for someone who's wanting to be in the skilled trades, which we have challenges hiring people for. So I would say, yes, we have all these relationships. I don't know that they're really, and this was sort of the economic, the prior strategic plan had a top-level goal of organizing an economic strategy where we have all of these important players, but what niche role does each one play across a broad economic ecosystem? And what role, if any, and I'm hearing, at least for the first part of this conversation, more of a role for how does the city organize and coordinate so that all of, there are a lot of different players beyond what I've just mentioned, are working in concert and not necessarily replicating different tools or specific areas of expertise, right? Like how do we together as more coordinated ecosystem, look at how we're elevating either some of the foundational principles or your strategic priorities by maybe having a greater role to play within a community of organizations that have very specific things they do really well, and doing that in a way that says what would be meaningful to the community?
So I was just, maybe offer an analogy too. There's this ecosystem we have, and then where, what's the city's role in that ecosystem? When we go build a building, at the end of the day, we can assign responsibility, we can contract for services for architectural, construction management, but we're still the owner, and we still get to, you know, own the long-term, you know, result of the building. And the same thing's true in economic development. We still have an owner, we still need to have an owner's perspective on the development agreements we're executing, all the real estate interfacing we do, and a number of different things, all the land use things, and how all that works together in a way for either us to have a successful or unsuccessful economic development strategy. So there still needs to be that city-focused, organizationally-focused network that really is thinking about Rochester specifically as a whole.
Other thoughts?
I appreciate you ministers bringing up Collider, because I think about how we're supporting people in our community who might not yet see themselves as business owners, but then become. And I think of several success stories, even in the downtown, that started as pop-ups, event-based businesses who are now not the anchor institution of our downtown, but are important places in our downtown. We heard about many of them at a past council meeting with broad community support. So I wonder how that Collider sort of incubator space gets some city, I don't know, relational help to make sure that we understand barriers and are addressing barriers to people being able to start out at that first rung.
Along that not only that we understand the barriers that people are experiencing, but that those people experiencing those barriers know that they have resources to help them overcome those barriers, thinking about minority-owned businesses in terms of. I'm thinking about minority-owned businesses in terms of.
I guess a little more observation, and economic resilience. Again, I'm just reading it, putting new things up there. We started with regional leadership and establishing things. And this is one where I really consider as more, not in a leadership role, but more in a partnership thing where you've got, you know, I'll say an EDA like Ready or you've got an EDA like DMC and an EDA like the Housing Coalition. And those are the places we partner on that as opposed to having that idea of like, we're going to take the lead on this. So that's my, more of an observation than a.
I mean, another way of saying that is like these, this is like the support and influence space.
Right, yeah.
I guess I would also say something that might fall in this category is if we're looking for, like our slow season is our weekend in Rochester. And we talked about that before, about what are other, you know, how do we attract folks or keep people here? Like we just had a serious Rochester meeting today and we will be doing some summer branding and ad campaigns. It's limited because of a lot of the dollars going to operate the Civic Center. But, you know, even if two weekends a year, you keep somebody like, don't go north from Minneapolis, because they're coming south. Like it's sunny down here and it's raining out there this weekend. We have all of this, the music scene, right? We were in the Star Tribune about being the weirdest, but that's applicable. And so what are the other things beyond the traditional base business? It's been a huge focus that can like take the existing economy to the next level. And so when I think of resilience, I think of that as well, existing businesses and how could we attract, you know, a next level? Or even your downtown housing changes the dynamics of what might be able to happen and what's the link is in. Those are things that have an influence over the ease and access to get into different businesses depending on where they are. Or even having people living downtown has a huge impact on like what the economy they need to do to support that.
What's your opinion?
Well, isn't that why we did the sports facility?
It is a huge part of what?
That's the only reason.
People also were interested in playing sports, but like it's part of why you would invest in something like that because we have 6,000 hotel rooms in Rochester that are less expensive and less warm at the weekend than in most places.
And I go back to the Ready discussion. To me, they're doing a very good job for Rochester. I'm not particularly sure why the city would need to step up. I mean, we have a nice problem and we're 2% unemployment. We have high wages, I mean, and so I'm not particularly sure what more you want Ready to do. They have on the same floor all these different organizations working together, which I think is a huge help.
And I wasn't trying to say that that isn't valuable, but they have a specific role that they play in economic development that they're very, very good at. And there are other organizations, as you mentioned, that are also in that building. And some are, that also play specific roles, but how do you make sure all of those are important in the equation that's broader than each niche?
Okay, we have Miller, Redricks and the mayor.
So I'll just, I go, I appreciate Minister's also bringing up experience Rochester because their meeting, I know a meeting before this year, they talked about the opportunities in the evening economy. I feel like we've grown some in that with music, with some of the downtown restaurant scene, with other aspects of that. I think clearly as we, live music requires a permit, requires a P, requires other city policy influence about where it can happen and when and how much is it going to cost. How do we support those elements where we're already seeing growth? And I would also add, I think there's a great standard of the Met City Marathon and the Met City Yonder having happened these past two weekends. And I've heard nothing but praise for staff working with both of those events to create dynamic routes that adapted to wherever the construction closures were. And I think those are elements that begin to build some events into the economy and create Rochester as a view of a destination beyond just weekday healthcare and ultimately probably comes in alignment with a sports complex and other dynamics to that evening and weekend economy. So I think those are directionally how I think about this and opportunities.
Thanks, President. A lot of our businesses that are going to be trying to move into this town, start in this community are going to come here for the traction of just already what our city has to offer. It's what brought me to this area just about 20 years ago is what this area had to offer in the business landscape. I think the most important thing we can look at when it comes to fostering dynamic economy is having it, having the process to start up a business in this community be simple. People starting small business, for example, obviously you see a lot of restaurants come. Unfortunately, you see a lot of restaurants go. You come in, you understand the restaurant business, you understand how to cook, you understand customer service, but you don't understand all of the steps you have to take to open a business in a community like Rochester where there is a lot of, a lot of red tape. There's a lot of things to work through to get to that point where you can open up. And to the run-of-the-mill business owner, it's daunting, okay? It's daunting. So, and then the next step to that is even as a large corporation, making sure that they can come in fluidly from the time, hey, I want to open this business here to the time they open their doors, it's fluid, it's quick. The timing of that, just if they're looking at it and they can go to this city and their timeline start to finish is eight months, and here it's two years, what are you going to do? Okay, so those are, those are really important things. There's a lot, there's a lot of businesses that want to come to this area naturally. I don't know if we need to go out and wave our flag and say, hey, come here, come here. Obviously, it's good to feel wanted and invited, but this is an attractive area to do business. It is. There's some things that you can't control that, that obviously our taxes are very high. Why is rents high? Why are small businesses going off? There's a lot of things that go into it. Property values are high, rent's high, so on and so on and so on. So there's stuff that, that.
Maybe try to characterize like a balanced regulatory environment.
You might have better words than me, Aaron. I'm just telling you really.
I'm just trying to help Jeff here, but yeah, balanced regulatory environment, fair regulatory environment. I mean, obviously, there's a reason all these things just get adopted, but at the same time, how do we have, you know, create a good user experience as they go through our process?
And here's the next step to that. Helping the businesses that are here grow, helping them grow. Those are, those are the ones that are really going to take off. Look at Mayo's done since the start, obviously, obviously. But there's a lot of other businesses that might still be here if growth and moving within their space would have been easier. We have had businesses leave because of that. So it's important to help the ones we have grow while attracting new ones, you know? And that's just, that's just been my experience in the businesses and business owners that I've, that I have spoken with.
So effective business retention strategies, I mean, if you go to the.
Yes, Ready does a great job. I'm in agreeance with both Councilor Palmer, Ready does a great job. They do a great job of being that place where, hey, I'd like to start this. It's a good start, they'll get you pointed in the right direction, you know? And there's a lot of great resources in this community. I've never asked a business owner in this community to help me and they've said no. There's great resources here if you just start asking around, there really is.
So I'll add to this. I think some of the things that the last couple of speakers have mentioned that we don't often think about that are part of our economic resilience, and that is our, our interest, our willingness to do things like our DA does, to be able to support community events like Rochester Public Music does, so that we get that reputation as a place to go. That's part of retaining businesses and residents that live here because they want a vibrant community. We have a great, you know, we have a great anchor institution, absolutely, but that's not everybody's world. There's a lot of other people who do the ancillary work and they want a reason to stay here too. So I'd say, you know, supporting our DA is one of the things that would fall under this. Supporting the city clerk's office and the work they do. I think we forget that the city clerk's office is where people go to get licenses, to where people go to get rules and regulations. And so that also falls under, how can we make sure we're utilizing the city clerk's office in a way that intersects with the business community, including WorkFirst Development, Inc. and Ready and all those others, so that there's alignment and people understand what the rules are that we set up? So I think then the city clerk's office does a lot of that with not all businesses, but with some. I also, somebody mentioned WDI, they do a great job. And I think, you know, having the city be a little more actively involved in that organization wouldn't be a bad thing. And then this last one, which I mentioned earlier this year, again, it's not a direct business thing, but if we're not paying attention to what's happening in childcare, our business folks aren't going to be able to go to work, right? Our men and women who are the, want to work, aren't going to be able to if we don't have childcare. So I just keep putting that on the radar as part of our economic resilience is making sure we're looking at the whole package. End of lecture.
Other thoughts? And I just to add to, from a builder's standpoint, I know the city is working with builders and particularly builders that aren't used to working in the Rochester environment and getting a sense of, you know, what are some of those barriers and looking at streamlining our licensing and permitting. So a lot of work is happening in that space now. And I think just continuing that type of work with other types of businesses.
And Randy, they're actually more complimentary than our local folks are dealing with our city. I just, I'm not sure people are aware of that, but the people that come in from other states, other cities that do work elsewhere have far kinder things to say about our community development department that our local people have. I think some of them, you know, have worked with the old and the new, right? And they're still carrying around some of the old baggage, so.
And that's a narrative every city, there's a couple of things in every city I've ever worked in, that is one of them. The folks that are predominantly focused in the community, things are more challenging and need to be, in Rochester's case, people from outside. Talk about the national developers that are coming and looking at our market. It's very easy comparatively speaking to our neighbors to the north, et cetera. We're more complicated than our, the small towns around us.
Yep.
You know, and by default, there are certain regulatory things that apply that, you know, don't apply to smaller communities around us. But generally speaking, that is a very common narrative. And there's always opportunity to do better. And there's things that can fall through the cracks and, you know, helping people navigate and have that ambit's person role is important as we get people, you know, through, through the process. So it's a, the other thing that every community is, you know, is challenged with is there's not enough places to eat because they go to the same place as all kinds of everyone. But, you know, there's a couple of common things as you go into different, different cities.
Are we ready to move to housing access? All right.
Yeah, second verse seems the first. Any feedback you have on the housing access space? We certainly heard, you know, an emphasis on owner-occupied housing. I think we can carry that forward here. I think that's still a great leading strategy. Production's an important part of the housing conversation. But what else would you like us to be thinking about in this space?
Councilmember Miller.
I'll just add, I know we have the ADU program, based on the federal funding side, we've had zero qualify or take that. And I wonder about how we evolve that program or consider alternatives if that's not creating ADUs.
I think we certainly put that in the list. And I think I just want to note, I don't know that we're going to be able to debate out every topic tonight, but like putting on lists, like ADUs are certainly a viable strategy to increase housing on existing footprints, it's very efficient. And we also know that we have some things we have to make decisions on. Do we want to charge them the connection fees that we charge other houses or not? You know, to encourage that because it's pretty, some of those fees can be fairly significant and a, you know, detriment to people wanting to move forward with an ADU. So those policy conversations to be had.
I think that that's a great point about where we're adding housing incrementally, where there's existing infrastructure versus where we're adding housing in blocks that requires new infrastructure is like, what is the policy about those types? And also, we just highlight the opportunity to focus on the starter homes, which we often hear about as not existing anymore and those are increasing in price. And I think there's a supply issue there, right? And there's other money in the market that's converting those from owner occupancy or ownership to rentals. And I hear increasingly those kind of comments. And I just wonder, with our homeownership creation program, which is getting good take up, update from builders, where we might think about the starter home supports now for smaller creative uses in those spaces, whether that's ADUs or cottage-style developments or others, shared access, where some of those other policies make it harder to create smaller format housing that is able to be sold.
Councilmember Palmer.
Well, our ADU program's probably been six years that we've had it or five years that we've had it. We've got a program out there to give you a grant and we've had no big fight on it. It's a romantic idea, it's not the solution that's going to help out our housing issue. And even today in the Tribune here, there's arguments up in cities about ADUs and somebody's putting one in and now the city council's sitting on it. And so one of the things with ADUs, we made a decision not to do this is, is to allow, right now we require somebody to own the property and live in one of the units. And if we took that away, that would open up the ADU program, but it'd also affect your neighborhoods. And I don't know if the city council is willing to go that step. But that'd be one step to help out the ADUs. One of the things we did do when we first started the ADUs was that we told them they had to run their separate sewer and water up to the middle of the road, which is about a $30,000 cost. Now if it's safe, they can hook it up to the house and use that sewer and water. It's kind of like just doing a addition to your house. We don't make them run that new addition out to the city, out to the center of the city. But that wasn't easy. That took us two years to get that through. So ADUs is romantic, but I don't see that as being a problem or be the solving this problem. Starter homes are something that, we went down to 3,000 square foot lots, which I don't know how many that we've actually had go down to 3,000 square foot lots. There's a lot of things you can do, duplex, most of it, all our two areas. We just don't see it. We don't see the market wanting that. And so I agree with Mr. Miller about, about using smaller houses and how do we do that on compact lots. One of the reasons we did was that, oh, geez, they need a garage. Not everybody needs a garage.
Mayor?
Condos.
Are we?
I think a lot of communities are adding a lot of condo communities. I haven't seen those like in mass quantities showing up here. So is there anything we can do to address that as one of the types of housing that might be of interest?
That's a clarifying question. Do you mean like vertical, like?
I've seen them, yeah, any kind, just a different, it's an alternative to, you know, homeownership and the way we traditionally think about it that might be of importance. I don't know.
Councilmember Doran.
Wondering if it's time to explore the possibility of creating a policy to limit the number of short-term rentals.
Yeah, there's a lot of layering to that.
I know there is.
What you can do and not just short-term rentals, but, you know, rentals on certain geographic areas and all that. Keep Michael pretty busy thinking about legal dimensions.
I just, I like to think about, keep that Michael busy.
Yeah. It's a fair conversation. We have seen, you know, a conversion of single-family homes to short-term rentals. I mean, it's obviously a part of our economy too in terms of people that are seeking long-term care. You know, they obviously want the opportunity to take that little different experience if they're here for six, eight, 10 weeks or whatever the case is. So it's kind of balancing, balancing that. There's also, you know, there's a lot of folks that are in a lot of house that aren't making that transition to the next house or the next opportunity. So what options, you know, whether it's condos or still preserving the asset and the investment of a home, but something that's, you know, better for the 55 and up, you know, group that's now again, don't want communal kids, but 4,000's worth of your house.
Councilmember Miller.
And does that our logic tax policy to that? I know that when we exceed a certain number of days, take it 30 or 31, then that no longer is charged. Is that, you know, an opportunity for us to appropriate this?
Yeah, there's some state lotteries around. You know, what kind of, what's a, you know, what's the short-term versus long-term? Yeah, and subject to logic tax, but we can look into some of those things for here.
Councilmember Palmer.
Well, my understanding in condos is that the state sort of rules and regulations are, prevent them from being built. And so that's a difficult part for us. I would not be in favor of short-term rentals and limiting them. I think that's part of the market and there's a lot of people who are here on internships and here for three months that need to have that. They don't want to sign up a 12-month lease. And I think that that would be an hindrance to our economic. And I think that that would be an hindrance to our economic viability to have people not have to have a short-term rental.
Well, I'm from a whole of things that I've heard, just to hear, to get the reaction. I did hear today, but I've heard it in other meetings. One of the things that came up during the Housing Coalition forum was making sure that from a rental perspective, that there's clarity within the list about which rentals are ADA, like not accessible, but ADA inaccessible for, and even maybe going further to what type of disability access certain types of units provide. So I don't know if that's something that resonates as being like important to consider. And I've also heard accessibility generally, like an ADA version of accessibility brought out before the town council, so I just assume that's still true. But I know the word access is there, but could be interpreted differently.
Other issues folks want to put on the housing access list?
No, I just want to comment on this thing, that there is, it's an odd trade-off having we talk about the housing stock and then the hospitality. And you do have a crossover there when you start doing the special, the short-term rentals. I know we treat short-term rentals as residential and that's sort of my question, is it really residential or is it along in the hospitality part, which we are not constrained on right now. I see a lot of our housing stock being taken out of housing and put into hospitality. And I think that's a valid thing for, from a policy perspective, for us to look at in the coming year.
We do register, at present time require registration, they're subject to this question to our rental standards. And, but again, point well taken.
And you've got, you've got the conflict of regulatory things happening and then registration, which is sort of a licensing thing, which are the same things, Councilmember Fredrick would say are the problems with getting things going. It's all that sort of weight of going to business. But I think in this case, I think there is a valid community question of, are a lot of the entry-level housing being taken off the market through, and converted to non-residential?
I think just, and just taking off on Councilmember Keane's line, it also can change the character of neighborhoods and blocks. And so, I think from a city's standpoint, understanding, you know, where they are proliferating and whether or not it's something that we should look at, I think it, I think it's valuable to have a clearer understanding of the geography of it.
Can I ask the consider ADA guidelines? We always consider ADA guidelines, it's more than that. So can we change that language just so we know what we're talking about? It's almost like exceeding.
And I appreciate Administrator Elms' question, because I wondered, is this when we issue rental certificate or do an inspection, if it's additional criteria that we're capturing there? Stairs at the entrance for multi-family buildings, is there an automatic door opener? Where's the access? So it's clear what type of unit that is? And I've heard similar concerns.
I think at a broader level, we can take the notion of and desire to increase accessibility or ensure accessibility.
That's better than just.
In housing and evaluate what kind of strategies, there's going to be a lot of some dead ends there, just to be straight about it.
Sure.
You know, there's certain, like the building codes, the building code and, you know, can you require above and beyond? But can you incentivize certain things in multifamily to be more accessible as you go through and provide action group of financing?
Well, I guess to that point, I mean, I've heard from constituents who say that they inquire about an accessible unit that's listed as accessible and it turns out upon a tour, that it's effectively impossible for them to live in that. So having better information upfront as part of what we're capturing and what's provided, rather than accessible or not, but accessible how?
Yeah, there's the existing versus new and affordability versus accessibility, like there's certain just policy things you have to navigate.
Other issues on housing access? Let's move on to inclusive growth management.
Again, I think there's a lot of this is, you know, land use policy focused, it's how we do infrastructure. You can think about it as, when you're doing a street, is it a complete street? I don't want to take you back to, you know, your municipal consent conversation last week, but like just the kind of stuff that fits into that category in terms of how you do growth and development and, you know, how you balance out all the various needs. So I think it can, you know, a wide range of things that you can think about in this area.
Mayor?
So one thing I think about is, it was a mayor's innovation project conference and a gentleman kind of followed up with me afterward out of a university in California, I can't remember which one it is. And it was about, this inclusive growth management was about really understanding what you have available to whom and where and making sure that you're not accidentally, I think we've, I actually think we've done a good job not to have this happen, like I think Sean can nod his head if he would, that we have secured housing, rental housing in all of our quadrants, right? We've made sure that we haven't just done it all southeast or all northwest. We've, you know, over the years I've been on the council, been pretty good about that. But what he did is he went in and looked at diversity, income levels, all those things. And you can find areas where we start, we could, if we're not careful, we could start building pockets. And so, you know, using that as, I don't, you know, we don't necessarily need to talk to him and I think Taryn has done, they've looked at it in a different way, she said, but maybe really being purposeful in looking at that kind of documentation as we move ahead with apartment developments and whatever, to just keep an eye on what we're doing to our city.
Councilmember Miller.
I appreciate the return to municipal consent conversation because the policy area or programming area that I feel like we need to be thinking about is how do we manage travel demand, sort of programs for commuter programs, others? Are we working with ROCOG? How are we working with Mail Clinic and other businesses in the downtown to collaborate on commuting strategies, share parking models? And then thinking about transportation planning, I would also think about transportation operations. And as we get to the point of looking to RMP on our RPT operator, I just got a text message as we were starting this meeting that four routes in a row have been canceled today on one of the highest ridership routes. And so, if we don't have transportation options that are working for people, we will not meet our city goals.
I would add also a balance between infill development and edge development and do we have the right balance, understanding the limitations that we may have when it comes to infrastructure capacity for, whether it's infill or edge? And do we do, from my perspective, if there is infrastructure needs and there's a question between edge development and infill, I would lean towards the infill.
Other thoughts?
I think that that's also that policy, what are the hookup fees and where are they charged and at what rate are new versus existing if there's capacity?
Just the policy alignment around infill or how do you align policies to support infill development?
Administrator, oh, go ahead.
Yeah, mine is more, again, I just, looking at this idea that we're going to do actions, I'm not, I can't tell if this is a strategic, this isn't one of my, I'm fine with the idea that the council has it up there, but if this, if the emphasis is on inclusive or growth management, I'm not sure what it is. But when I look at the things we're listing here, these are almost, they're not operational things, but they're just normal things that we have policies on. And I'm not sure what having them in the strategic priority says our land use policy has to change because of our infrastructure charging has to change because of our municipal consent. I'm actually struggling to watch what's going on here.
I guess from my perspective, Councilmember, I would say, and being one of the four new council members, I find this discussion extremely valuable because I'm understanding where my colleagues' priorities are and, and in some cases where my colleagues are very clear on what their priorities are or aren't. And that helps from, from my perspective to understand the balance of this council. And so I think for all of us, we should be listening for that.
I just, I think also, I appreciate the difficulty of Jessica trying to take notes as we're having this conversation live. And what I heard in municipal consent was the conversation we're having about travel demand management, commuter planning. And in land use policy, our comp plan is very clear that land use and transportation planning go hand in hand, but our community development department doesn't currently stack that way. It's more land use, ROCOG does transportation planning, but perhaps with a different framework than the city of Rochester's comp plan. So is there an opportunity that we better embed transportation planning into capability of community development? So those are some of the things I think about and how we're thinking about this as a strategic priority so that our infrastructure capacity is managed in a way that we don't have to expand capacity, but make it work dynamically for the system and community that we live in.
I also, Councilmember Palmer. I want to give time to councilmembers.
Well, I'm not particularly sure municipal consent needs to be up there. We, I think this is the first one that I've evolved in six years, so I don't know if that's a huge issue. My problem is with the infill is, we've asked for math, we've asked where infill could occur. I've never seen anything that says these are available lands. And so when you say infill, it depends on what you're talking about. You could infill out to 55th Street Northwest and we just did that with a big old project. Not everybody would consider that to be infill. One of the things that people keep forgetting, or at least I keep mentioning, is in 2015, our houses, our median sales price of houses was down 41% compared to the seven counties area in the cities. There are 41% difference. We are now above cost-wise than they were up there. So we're doing something wrong. In the last 10 years, to have that much of an increase in your, in your median sales price is pricing people out of, out of the market in Rochester. Where that affects us as a city council is, if you have two people and one works in the cities and one works down here, at 41%, they're living in Rochester. If you're, if it's cheaper to live in the cities with more to offer, you're traveling. You know, the Rochester person, that takes their paycheck and they take their talent out of Rochester. And I, and I think that that's huge. That's in 10 years, 41% difference.
But we're growing, right? Minneapolis is landlocked, we're not growing, we're growing.
Well, it's a seven county area.
Yeah, I think that there is an important part of that particular discussion to think about is, you know, I'm from the Twin Cities, a lot of family in the Twin Cities. There are certain areas where their values are either very stable or declining as well. And you have to almost think about what are the communities like Rochester, the Twin Cities and how their values evolve over time versus taking it as a seven county area. I also just say, the point I wanted to make is, you don't have to be perfect here. Jess doesn't have to be perfect here. I'm sure she's going to turn this into like, she's going to vote all of your audio and AI and they'll kick out an action plan and it'll work well. I think we're really just looking for the, no, she's really going to do that, I know. But like, the, we're really looking for the essence of your conversation here. So you don't have to have the perfect strategy if you want us to think about infill development or if you want us to think about transportation planning or owner-occupied affordable housing. We just want to hear that and we're going to then take that and try to actually put definitive strategies and goals to it.
Councilmember Fredrick.
Not to state the obvious, Councilmember Palmer, but I'm an advocate for all avenues of home housing, whether it be manufactured home park, affordable apartments, cheap apartments, mid-range, high-range condos, all the way up to your high-dollar homes, which we have plenty of in this community as well. Right now, I do feel it's a simple supply-demand issue that we have and making it easy, just like we already talked about, making it easy for builders to build whatever it is they're doing or manufactured home developments, whatever that is. Help them streamline that, get that done, get ahead of the supply. And when the market gets satisfied or all of a sudden we're seeing it turn into a buyer's market, because we have availability of all different avenues, you'll see the prices stabilize and our, maybe go down. Not the greatest for people trying to sell, great for people trying to move in and, you know, or move out of whatever they're living in at the current time and into something maybe to better fit their family or situation. So I just think right now it's a simple supply-demand thing and it's driving the prices of everything up and hang on.
Councilmember Palmer.
I'd just add, separate from this discussion, but I think related and what I read into the description, is making sure that we don't forget community needs and we ask the community what those needs are over time. So I think our National Community Survey consistently shows public engagement is one of our lowest scoring, higher value elements. And so, are we building in that co-design, surveying, other ways that we're hearing from the community and making sure that these programs and city resources are in alignment with expectations and needs?
I'll go back to what Mr. Miller was saying about travel demand management and I think that's really an important part of this is, if I can get rid of one car, I can save $9,000 a year in cost. And I think, you know, with the Rapid Plus, I think today this is an opportunity to see that now it won't be here in two more years, but that's a, that's one of those things that would be a cost saving for most people.
I was just thinking back to what you were talking about, like economists, I think this is both management and parts of discern and I think some of your conversation, depending on where you live or where your business is, these concepts fall in one or the other and they probably fall in both places, but it depends on where you live and where your business is. So I also think of like your parking conversations that are coming up as part of both economic resilience, but also growth management, depending on if you're, you know, mostly a downtowner or you're mostly commuter to downtowner. And then I also, just to the point of civic engagement, it'd be interesting to know relative to the discussion about economic resilience, you know, there's a lot of new things you can do depending on the zoning you live in and where your house is, from your home. It's not maybe considered a, you know, home occupation business anymore. You might even be able to like change something up to get your first floor into the service and live upstairs kind of a thing. So I think we're kind of in a space where we have a lot of opportunity for even within the community that somebody misses. What are the missing things that might exist that people don't even know we could already do and not even have to own a separate building?
Are we ready to move on to, Councilmember?
Sorry, I, just one last thing. I don't know if this is the right spot to put it, but I've been thinking a lot about our townships as well as our county commissioners and if this is the spot where we need to do a little collaborative work to repair some broken trust.
I think you get, yeah, could go a lot of.
We did a good job of staying in words.
But it could be even that strategic transformation space because if we collaborate well, we'll execute well and so it's a good point, hopefully, and a place for that.
All right, moving on to responsible environmental stewardship.
I'll just maybe preface this, so obviously this used to be a foundational principle. You've seen a lot of energy in this space. We have big goals, whether it's ARPU 2030, you know, we have greenhouse gas emission goals in this space. We're looking for feedback on, you know, what success looks like here. I think the normal things you hear about are, you know, in the transportation and building space, if you talk about greenhouse gas reduction, if you can have effective strategies in those areas, those are, you know, will bring that to life. Acknowledge, Councilmember Miller brought up the natural gas franchise fee conversation that at some point may make its way to the council that could, it's a longer-term conversation, but could provide funding in this space, so we'll, you know, obviously queue that up for you. I'm just going to mention it, just, get ready for this, Councilmember Palmer, just. But, you know, one thing we have sort of tackled and discussed in the past in this and it'd be helpful for us to understand if you want to see this on the list, the RAPL list is organized garbage collection. There's a lot of passion in that space. I told you, right? I'm just trying to be anticipatory here. But again, you know, there's certain things with that particular item. If that's a tough, no-go conversation, like let's keep off the list. We don't need to bring forward, it's tough, it is complicated. People value choice in that conversation and there's collective opportunity and impact you can make by making that decision. So it's a balancing act for you all.
Councilmember Palmer.
Since you brought it up, about five years ago, am I right?
And maybe a little more now.
More, I wasn't here.
We did a survey. We did a survey, a scientific survey that we mailed out to people, and 92% of the people said they liked the choice of garbage collection. And a long time ago, the county decided that they were going to do the same thing. It was the worst public hearing I've ever seen. If you could ask past county commissioners, they thought they were going to get targeted by them. People like their choice, they like to be able to call to get a lower price, and there's absolutely no reason to touch them other than the fact that you want to. But I forewarn you, it's an ugly conversation.
And I would just say, I think it's worth studying because I do hear also about the impact of multiple trash collectors on our roads and the impact that they may have on our infrastructure. Councilmember Miller.
I'll just say, I lived in a community that was in the process of not moving to a municipal collection service, but because they already had a municipal collection service, we're able to add organics, yard waste as an additional service. And I think as we think about the value add and what we expect as a community to, the county is thinking about yard waste and municipal, and compost, household options, and I wonder if there's an avenue to, Councilmember Dorring's question too, in the prior point of working on a strategy and understanding some of the logistics and opportunities. And just as a study, I've also tended to pay less in garbage collection fees when there was a municipal offering than this choose your own where the rates go up and then you get somebody coming and knocking on your door and offering a lower rate if you switch and switch out your cans. So I think, I wonder how the question was written. I don't doubt the scientific survey, but I also learned that depending on how I ask a question, I might get a different answer.
Councilmember Palmer.
You can also look at St. Paul and when they went to single-use and it's been not well-received and not well-used, and now they've even dropped using compost and yard waste because they can't keep up with it. So it's not far from us that it has not been successful in St. Paul.
Councilmember Keen.
I understand the debate here, but for the purposes of this meeting, if you're going to have this sort of strategic priority, it sounds like it belongs on the list. And whether it goes anywhere or not, I'm not sure.
Could be review path study or something.
Yep, I'm going to add one that I've always talked about, and it is some kind of dashboard on what our, our key environmental priorities, whether it's lowering emissions, waste, water, and, and community, community engagement in it. And, and something that as a council, we can then have staff bring to us and say, we are making this kind of progress on, or as a council, we can say, this, this is how much we want to, when it comes to city vehicles, reduce emissions by blank percent and by the year 2035. And then we can see the progress that we're making on our priorities. Other, other thoughts? Councilmember Dorring.
Is the air quality system operational and is there a public dashboard for that?
We're getting an update in June, I think.
Okay.
Probably not extended environmental. Oh, it's on the joint.
Okay.
Do you have a system or two different systems?
Yeah, I'm aware. I just didn't, I just didn't know if it was publicly available information. Yep, that's the goal, so I'm happy there.
Mayor.
I'll just add, you have the RPU 2030, and you may, I'm sorry to step out for a call, but you may have already covered it, but I think the, both RPU and the city can start thinking about, even though it's in the future, start thinking about what happens and what kind of, are we going to, you know, produce some of our own? Are we going to do more geothermal in this community? Are we going to do, and we are doing some obviously at the RP, at the Public Works Building that we learned about, and solar, which we are building, we're building solar-ready, right? Are we going to start moving in that direction and is it through RPU, is it through us? I just hope we continue to have those robust discussions about how we, how we move ahead as a city.
Anything else on environmental stewardship?
I would love to do a study, if possible, about the banning of single-use plastic bags.
All right, moving on to transformational capital projects.
I think like, there's many projects we have, you all know about them. I think this is the execute well language and any other perspective you want to offer up in this space, but some of this is systems and execution focus.
So the, one of my motivations for this is it's, when I look at, I mean, I think we have more public projects and then there's private projects going on that are dependent on public execution with them. And worst-case scenarios, we're sitting around nine months from now and a year from now saying, we're behind a year on this because, and what do we need to do strategically so that doesn't happen? And I don't know if that's the attention of, of this group that we need to, you know, along with being a policy board, we've got to take more, put more emphasis on making sure we stay on track. And how can we do that? But the concern is, when you have other strategic priorities, you're going to make those, you're going to have other things coming up, you're going to be saying like, what every meeting will be, what can we do to get this on the agenda? And I think that the soft thing that happens underneath that is resources start getting moved around and we start losing track of the things that, in my view, are most important over the next four years. So if there's something, and I don't want to get into like, I mean, I could give ideas like, okay, let's have a reporting track as part of the, of, on our major projects, on where they're at and what the next check mark is, but I don't want to be so prescriptive. I just want the staff to know that it's important to this group that we don't fall behind in. Maybe that should be what we talk about as performance plans on this, that these, this is really part of the performance plan for the next couple of years. That's my perspective.
I want to, go ahead. I just want to emphasize, you know, the point, the whole reason we do this work is, you know, we can't do everything and we want to do some things very well. And we have some things that started eight years ago and we're now getting to the point of execution and trying to deliver well and execute well. And so, you know, I think that's a challenge across, you know, any number of years to sustain the momentum and continue to, you know, generate that, you know, positively moving forward. But I think that's part of this, is we bring an action plan back, we want it to be an action plan that lives within the resources, particularly both people and financial. I think this also is, you know, predicated a little bit on the idea that like, when we give you a budget, you want some fidelity in that and we want to make sure that what we represent from the, you know, to the public is something that we can accomplish. And so I think there's a number of things we'll try to hit when we bring this one forward.
To Councilmember Keen's point, should we bring definition to what transformational capital projects we're talking about? Is it a defined number? I think all of us can list, you know, there's Link, there's Sixth Street Bridge, there's our, our work with Unbound, there's others, but I think to have a shared understanding as to what those transformational capital projects are, and then I fully agree with Councilmember Keen on then having, you know, reporting, some kind of tracking for those projects, whether it's, you know, as a part of a council meeting or in our weekly updates or whatnot. Mayor.
Yeah, and so a couple of things here. One is, I think it was a year ago, I asked Cindy Steinhauser, whoa, we're taking on a lot of stuff, what's our, what's our like plan to make sure we can implement all these? And she did a really nice job putting up like a Gantt chart, and so I know she's done some of that work, but I, and I don't want to add extra work, I think that's kind of what Patrick was getting at. And yet, you know, we have a, even beyond the things that you're talking about, we have other things that we do in the city every day, whether it be the roads northwest or the sidewalks southeast or, you know, there's all that other stuff that goes on there too. Besides the, and they're all transformational, to a neighborhood, right? If your streets are getting done, that's transformational in your neighborhood. So I think to kind of think about the whole range of things that we do as a city and, you know, I'm not asking necessarily for you to document every single thing that we do, but we do need to understand, to Patrick's point, I think, every new idea that comes up, and I've, I've sort of said this to Erin and some of the others, folks, we can't keep asking the state and the federal government for more. We have, not that we shouldn't be thinking about the future, we should, but we have our hands full for the next 10 years. And so let's be judicious about the things we ask for. For instance, for our next project, let's have it be something that makes a project we're already working on cheaper or better. You know, so to Erin's comment, how can we do what we're going to do, which is a lot, to the highest quality and for the best outcomes for our city and not keep piling on? I think we just, we just have to use real care there. Or our staff will only, because they're overwhelmed.
Administrator zones.
I also think of this with, again, the overlay of the foundational principles of like social equity and also boost decision-making, but quality services, like if we're not doing everything well every single day, like the transformational project won't feel as exciting for people. It's sort of not like seven years will fly by and trash, except every day of seven years will feel like seven years, depending on where you're at. We're there. So I guess one thing that I, it's not like listed there, but just from perspective of having those foundational or the foundational principles is like, this isn't as much about mindset of employees, but every time they touch right of way, whether they work, whether it's water line, electric, wastewater, stormwater, thermal gutter, or another agency, like ideally we have like a consistency of like that business forward, community forward experience, but, and we have coordination, we're coming along on that with our CIP, right? Like everyone has their own CIP, but like the CIP touches right of way across the city. So thinking about cutting ones, if some of those types of things are as important because if you're driving across the city, you're touching a project and it's going to transform your day depending on where you're trying to go. So as much as it does say, you know, major investments, I guess I still would apply the foundational principles of the quality services and, and those kinds of things. And there is a mindset and organizational, like how we're resourcing our organization to have that consistent experience. Because people are not going to differentiate who's doing what project. They're going to think the city, I reminded someone today, that we did not close Seventh Street.
Tell the mayor it's a whole institution.
Yeah, and I, I want to differentiate, at least in my mind, the difference between we're always doing things versus there's something unique going on in the next couple of years.
Yeah, yes, and we're, and.
And we're not, yeah, and we're not, we didn't do something that we're going to like, we ask the streets, or we're going to not do, you talk about the projects, they're all the visible ones, but look at all the stuff under the water treatment plant right now. Pretty soon we're going to be building the north park, park district or park and rec facility. These are huge undertakings and some of those, if they're internal and they fall behind, it's unfortunate, but it's not like government failure. Link going out and like going out two years long is government failure. Sixth Street Bridge project, getting started and then having some sort of reset on it is, is failure. It's local government failure.
Other thoughts?
Can I ask that a question?
Go ahead.
So Councilmember Keen, I, I appreciate that perspective. So what about a broken public transportation system? Is that a government failure? And then when do we address that? I mean, so that's a transformal, transformational system that is not functioning now.
Right, it's the operation side versus the capital side. And there, we've dealt with these before and it is something that I think we do need to make sure gets the attention, but how that happens is a different thing. So that's, but, but yeah, that's a, that's a, but again, it's different. It's a service we're providing. It would be similar to saying like, you know, like city services with police or the library's going to be closed now on Sundays because of something. That's a, that's a failure, but those are operational things. This, what I'm talking about now is more of these bigger things that you set out to do and, and not get done. The thing up in the cities with this, the line of the train lines, I mean, it's terrible. And it's, and it just sets in with people and says, yeah, that's just the way they are. And, and it does, it does worry me when you start, we start talking about, well, we have to get everyone's input and everything. But that's not how private enterprise works, when they set out to do something, they'll...
And that's not my intention, that was the, I don't think we have to get in.
No, no, and, but I do think it's important and that's why I'm kind of harping on this is that this, this council, and I'm not sure if this whole council, this is just me, but I am really concerned about that over the next, that we start getting into things like, oh, and yeah, we're, you know, we're in somebody's way here and we promised we'd help, so it's going to take six more months. I think we, those should be, those would be considered by me as failures.
That's helpful, thanks for the clarification.
And I want to be careful, I mean, I'm the one bringing this up, I, I think it's shared here, but I'm the one voicing it.
No, I think, and I, I think it's, it is worthy of being on the list, given the five to seven years that we are going to be under. And I think, I think bringing a shared understanding as to what those capital, transformational capital projects are, and then our role on keeping them moving forward, I think will , will vote us all out, so. Anything else on this one? Wrap-up comments?
Yeah, so our next step again is to get this first phase in front of you at the second meeting in June, and then we'll continue to work on the action plan and be very much forward. Certainly also use this as an opportunity to further engage, you know, with your stakeholders and constituents around what they think, you know, would ultimately bring this, you know, plan to the light. And we're certainly happy to receive, you know, that feedback as we, as we move along. But really appreciate the conversation, I think this is really good for you all just to kind of give some perspective on what success might look like here and what expectations. And this is a lot about expectations, and so appreciate you for being with us today.
All right, we'll take a, oh, go ahead.
Just a final thought, as we talk about in general notes, it's come up a couple of times, but data tracking dashboards, having key performance measures. Because I feel like in many ways we took some strategic priorities that were very broad, could have covered a lot of things, particularly in their, their language, we'd make them more specific, and I wonder if there's not also an opportunity to have specific performance measures that we're tracking on these strategic priorities as we.
We will do that as part of the action planning process, so we will try to say, what are, I mean, again, if you do everything, you've done nothing, so what are the, if housing is number of owner-occupied units constructed in 2025, that would be an indicator there. And whatever, maybe two or three for each, not too many.
No, I don't want to create new, new like staff positions just to track data on the strategic priorities.
But what's the impact?
But just making sure that we're tracking at a high level on, are we on target? Do we need to have a study session?
Good point. We will take a seven-minute break and come back for rules, rules and code of conduct. All right, next is council rules and code of conduct, and I'll let Administrator Zounds kind of kick us off on this.
Sure, thank you, Council President, council members. Make sure I'm projecting, so if you can't hear me, give me one of these and I will try to make sure I see it, or just say, I can't hear you. Okay. I'll talk louder. So the, what you have listed here, there's two slides, I think it's about five things that we heard when you had had your initial discussion about the council rules and procedure and code of conduct, so wanted to kind of bring this back around to for refinement. Obviously, we heard some other things as well, but these were things that generated some more additional conversation from council.
some more additional conversation from council in your last study session. Um, so looking at the, this idea of whether or not you have a strong interest or more discussion about adjusting the open comment period from two to three minutes. Also, if you did that, was adding the one minute sufficient? Or would you want to talk about something different? Um, the presiding officer and whether or not the current rotation based on month, so January and July being board one. Um, and, you know, obviously, all of these options are open to further requirement from council or complete change. Um, you know, something more informal for the council president would appoint, and I think the mayor has some things to share about this as well, for situations where both the council president and the mayor are not, that provides a different amount of opportunity for the person that's that ward that month. Um, and then voting rotation. I don't actually recall when this came up during the last discussion. I recall it coming up a couple of years ago. Um, but whether or not there's an interest in always keeping the board one through six with the council president voting last, or if there's, some cities also do a rotation, like a different list every single week. Not saying you should do that, but, um, I think there's, sky's the limit of what you could do, or you could keep it how it is, so.
Yeah, and then there's a couple more, more, you know, you said you're previewing each one.
So one of the things that we had been talking about also as well that came up that I think council president had mentioned is like agenda timing and a glide path for making sure that we utilize all of our tools so council halls are prepared, or especially the big decisions, but understanding better when something's going to be study session and then whatever falls on your voting agenda, whether maybe there's been multiple study sessions, engagement pathway, as well as better utilizing reports and recommendations. So this is sort of the glide path discussion synthesized. Um, and then an emerging issue, um, so not everything made it through the legislature, but one of the things they did is changes to the remote voting opportunity. And so I think this is probably a, I don't know, unless there's a whole lot of alignment, probably not to be decided in any upcoming immediate rules changes. But do you have any thoughts about whether you want to adjust your rules to have more opportunity for remote participation, whether that's for the members of this group? Um, I mean, unlimited could create some unique dynamics that don't currently exist, but we have the joy of experiencing during COVID. Um, and then whether or not from a public participation perspective, you want to examine that as well. Currently, people can ask for an accommodation, um, but, and currently, you can vote remotely, but it's really, you need to have a medical condition and there's limitations to three times per year, even if you had some medical situation going on, regardless of what that might be. So husbands have a number, guest technically could change, but just something to be thinking about and how, how might you either benefit or not benefit if you make some changes to more remote joining? And I would say in general, that would be challenging to do until you have your upgraded chambers as well, or to do effectively.
Okay, why don't we go back through the issues that we heard at our last of, uh, study session on this and, um, and just take them one at a time and get thoughts from folks, open comment period, two minutes. Moving into the three minutes, I think, from what I recall, Councilmember Miller, this was your proposal. Any more to add to it?
Rochester Public Schools, their school board meetings, use three minutes. I have had the opportunity to attend. I've seen that work well for speakers, particularly students. And I think of other community members who are frequently rushing, especially in those last few seconds, and I wonder if there's an opportunity that three minutes still gets us to this goal of 20-ish minutes of open comment as the maximum. It provides people a little grace in not having a perfectly polished set of remarks that makes a tight point two minutes.
The one thing that I would add, if we do move ahead with the three minutes, is that we do have the, the requirement that it be 20 minutes total. And if we, uh, currently, if we have 10 speakers and they're perfectly on time, we have 20 minutes. If we have 10 speakers under three minutes, that's 30 minutes. So I would suggest in tandem with any change to the per speaker of time limit that we increase the time so that I, as the presiding officer, don't have to ask the council for, to suspend the rules to get all speakers in. So other thoughts, Councilmember Frederick?
Yes, I'm in favor of staying at the two minutes because one of our president Schubring's favorite words is concise. I like them to stay concise. And I want to hear from more people, not less people. I want to hear from, I want to hear from 10 people for two minutes versus only hearing from, you know, five or whatever you could hear from her. Do the math for me, Randy.
Thank you for being concise, Councilmember Frederick. So we have Palmer, Keen, and, uh, the quiet guy here, Wal. Uh, so, uh, Councilmember Palmer.
I, I like the two minutes. I, I think if you did three minutes, there's still going to be rushing at the end of it. Um, I think anything that I've not seen it being a detriment to people telling us really what they want to say, that makes it concise, which I think is good for them and is good for us. Um, they can still email us, they can still talk to us individually. I think for public, if you go to three minutes, they're just going to be rushing at the end anymore, so.
Councilmember Keen.
Yeah, I, I guess I would, I, I actually thought more publicly that the idea that we're expanding it is a good like indication to the public. So I, I was looking to support this. I don't understand the 21 minutes total, but I, I guess I would agree with you, President Schubring, that if we do that, we should probably make it a 30-minute total if we go to three minutes.
Uh, Councilmember Wal.
So when I first joined the council, it was four minutes. And we had all kinds of people who wanted to talk. And I'd say every other time we were passing, uh, suspending our rules so that we can give more people more time. We changed it to two minutes, which would seem to indicate more people could talk. And it's ironed itself out, and I don't think, since we've not even one time gone over the 20 minutes. So I, I wonder if it's just, uh, ironing itself out. I'm not, three minutes is fine with me. I think any argument we made from two to three minutes, we can make from three to four minutes.
Sure.
Uh, you know, can you get your point across in two minutes? I hope so. I just don't think it's an issue currently. Uh, we only have two or three or four people who are signing up each week. So I'm pretty ambivalent toward it, but I can support it.
Uh, Councilmember Miller.
Just a question. When it was four minutes, was it also still when you joined that people could speak at every meeting and not just once a month?
No, just once a month.
Just once a month, alright, okay.
Any other thoughts on this? I guess I'm, I guess I'm with, uh, Councilmember Wal. I kind of go back and forth. I think three minutes, giving another minute to members of the public, I'm okay with. Uh, I do agree that you can be concise in two minutes. And I, I get a sense that people are pretty concise. I think they make their point in two minutes. But if, if we're giving an extra minute, I'm fine with it. I, I, I find it interesting watching our open comment period where there are two minutes, but then when we do have a public hearing and it's five minutes and they're speaking on a very specific topic, there, that five minutes goes pretty quickly from my standpoint in watching them. So I think maybe the three-minute to five-minute balance between the two, I think, might be fine. Any other thoughts on this?
Well, I'll just add, Brooke Carlson and myself, and I don't remember if it was Mark Time at the time, Greg, Greg Wright perhaps, um, our tri-government meeting was where this topic came up. And we did make the recommendation for two minutes, uh, because the county was two minutes. That was kind of ultimately where we went. And I thought the school had done two, but they stuck with, they had three. Um, the school, the difference the school did is they don't televise them. We've chosen not to do that. Um, so, you know, we're not 100% aligned with the schools and we don't often have children speaking before the council. The schools do a lot because it's a school district and kindergarten school. So I guess I kind of felt like we took the big move, we, we made the change. Uh, a year later, we're, we're revisiting it. And if there had been problems, I would have said, okay, but there haven't been any. So I guess I feel like we're looking to solve something that's not really a problem. So I, I guess I'd say stick with two minutes for another year and see how it goes. And if it doesn't work and we hear complaints, besides the fact that we just made the change, that was a complaint, right? Whether it be three minutes or two minutes. But I think once we made the change, it's gone relatively well, so.
I have a related question. So currently, we only have open comment period for those that are present physically. And, uh.
They can request to do their open comment virtually if they need, like.
For the comment.
And I don't, we don't like have a complex rubric for whether you need accommodation or not.
So we're not hearing from remote.
If they requested in advance, we.
In advance.
So in advance is the change that we saw, and that's limited the, um, the remote.
And we had a pretty negative situation with remote voting comment. Many, many cities have had because of the ability to load it up and have hack it if people could hack the open comment. Would be a nicer saying it than.
Less unprofessional.
I guess I have a question about that too, because I was thinking about remote participation. And even in state legislative committees, they have remote participation, but they have to sign up ahead of time, right? They're, they're vetted, added to the list, to give it an order. And I wonder if there's something that, there was a recent comment at a public hearing about other speakers who would have spoken but were having to be there in person in conflicts. But I just wonder about that, especially as we're thinking about this emerging issue. How we contemplate.
Like publicizing it, maybe?
Publicizing it, developing a process, making clear what the rubric is for remote participation.
Maybe we have a process, you know, or so, I mean, it's on every single agenda that talks about the public hearing process, like the whole, it's like a whole page of bullet points of how you can, different ways that you can provide your input, which, and then we provide the written, some people will write in and we put that all, and then we add it to the minutes of the package. So from a staff perspective, I think we have a process. I'm not sure that, I don't know if people are reading that or we're publicizing it in the agenda. Maybe there's a different way to let people know.
Anything else on, uh, open comment period? All right. Let's move on to rotate, rotating based on month? Or the mayor made this, uh, proposal, council president appoints. Mayor, additional comments on this?
When I first became mayor, that was the process that we went through. As a council president, would, if the council president was going to be gone, they appointed. We changed that to the rotating basis, I think, my first year here. Yeah, it was before you. So it was that, right before the pandemic, actually, I think. Where, where it interfaces with my office is if I'm gone, then the council president automatically becomes the mayor.
Acting mayor.
Acting mayor, thank you. It's like, right, but acting mayor. And I guess I would say, as the mayor, it feels, it feels like there should be a little bit more thought about who is going to be acting mayor. It's not just who's, who's next in line, if you will. And so I would prefer to be able to work with the council president, should he be gone, to say, you know, maybe he'll appoint someone to run the meeting and I would appoint someone with his appointment, he would make it. But I could ask him to be acting mayor while I'm gone. And I will just say the other thing to remember is when our rules were written back in the dark ages, there was no technology. There is very little that a mayor can't do, including signing documents. If you want to travel, if you can travel with the, or computer remotely. We are available on cell phone all the time. We are available on email. None of those things were around when the rules were initially written, our, our policies. So it, it isn't a huge burden necessarily, but there are some times where you have to speak or you have to, you know, to do something. So I would like to be able to work with the council president on that.
So I think we're talking about two separate functions.
They are.
And maybe staff can give us a, is the presiding officer the also acting mayor when the council president is out of town? Or is that a different line of decision making?
Yeah, I believe the ordinance says it's the council president. So whoever is the acting council president, that was our interpretation of it in the past, then became the acting mayor.
Okay, while they look that up, I know.
We're ready, yeah.
Councilmember Frederick.
Thanks, President Schubring. Uh, question. So Mayor Norton can't be present at the meeting, but she could make herself available, to be available electronically. Is that an option? Like she could just remotely be involved in the meeting? Like, is that an option even?
I did that one time, but I was not allowed to speak.
It will be different than that, but if you go to the next slide, there's this pending, the rule of government legislation that allows for that. It also is a little bit clunky. I mean, let's be real, like hybrid meetings are clunky despite having the technology available. I think what the mayor is talking about though, isn't the actual council meeting. It's all the other things that happen.
Right, I understand that. But I'm just talking pertaining to this. So let's say President Schubring has to be gone for the week, but he wants to participate in the meeting. He can't just act as president virtually. We just can't have him on, he can't act virtually. That's not part of the way we do things. That's what I'm asking.
Under current law, you cannot do that.
Okay, all right. And then either the two, either of the two options, option one or two, I, I would be comfortable with either one. I personally did not run for city council to be president. I ran to be representative of Ward Four. I'm not interested in being president. I think he does a good job and there's other people in this room I think would do a great job. I don't feel, you know, cast aside if I'm not, you know, if I don't get to be council president once during the year. So I'm open to either of those options.
Councilmember Palmer.
Well, a couple of things. One, one, I think, I think it's important that people do become the presiding officer because it's not an easy job. It's not like being a city council member, you actually have to pay attention to the entire meeting, which, which doesn't always happen in trying to keep control of everything. And I'll go back to the mayor's, when, when, if you're the acting mayor, you're not really the acting mayor. If a tornado or a huge flood came through, then, then you would have to do something with the city administrator. But being acting mayor is not a job that you do anything, so.
That is not true.
Well, it was when I was, I didn't.
You got lucky.
So anyway, that's my two cents, but I, I think it's good to have it be switched.
Uh, Councilmember Keen.
Yeah, I actually had some peers that that was sort of like the worst time for them to be, they have to do that lead thing. And I, it was just their time in the barrel by our process. I like option one up here. I actually am not so much a fan of option two with the council annually appoints. If you think about the logistics of that, I like the idea of the council president in absence would, would do it. And I, I just think that's a cleaner way to do this, and I would support that method if we make a change.
I guess from my perspective, I am taking, that I currently occupy that role now. I think I agree with Councilmember Keen that if, for example, the council president were out of town and, uh, Councilmember Palmer happened to have that month and he happens to be out of town that same day, then who makes that decision? And so I, I guess I look at option one and say, the council president appoints the presiding officer, and then the council can ratify that. Or if they don't like the council, the, the chosen presiding officer, they can, as their first order of business, appoint someone else, I guess.
That makes a point of order though. Just, just, I, I didn't understand it that way. This, to me, would have been more of, it's June 20th and you're going to be gone June, or July 1st to July 8th. You would approach someone to do it. It wouldn't be ratified through the whole council. That, that's what I, that's my understanding of what we're talking about. It, your, your explanation threw me off because it sounded like you'd need to know long enough advance to get it on a council agenda. I, I, I didn't see that.
Yeah, yeah, and I, I agree with you, Councilmember. I just was leaving the option open that if, because it is the entire body.
I just was leaving the option open, that if, because it is the entire body that makes the decisions, leaving that open.
I, I agree with Mr. Keen, I think number one makes sense to me, and if we do it with the mayor, she can appoint, she wants to be fine, it'd be awesome.
And I don't even know if that's in our rules of operation, or that, that just gets caught up between.
It's in two places.
Makes sense. That makes sense.
Uh, council member Miller.
Are you, are you?
Maybe. Just sorting through the, the different options, and we were just reviewing the charter language that informed the rules to begin with. Really, the charter language does contemplate the council as a body, making the decision of who the, who the replacement is for the president, or vice versa, potentially both the mayor and the president are gone. So it really does kind of contemplate a larger, a decision by the larger body, and maybe as a logistical matter that is more feasible for, for us to work with, to know who really is the acting president, the acting mayor, and to have documentation of that, in order to support potentially legal documents that are being executed.
I guess I'll just add, and I'm not sure how to phrase it in terms of that interpretation of the charter, but to council member Frederick's point, providing an opt-out, if that's not a role that an individual council member wants to serve throughout the year, maybe that's also a mechanism that gets closer to option one. Because I see option one as council president Schubert approaches someone, they have the ability to say yes or no. It's not an appoint, I mean, it's an appointment, but it is a conversation. And it's flexible to other people's availability. But again, within the charter language, perhaps there's also an opt-out mechanism.
Council member Frederick.
Can it be as simple as he makes a recommendation and just vote on it?
I think it can, just have to be in advance.
If you were, were in session. You need to have the body together in order to do that. And there, to that point, there were circumstances in the past few years where, where the individual that was set by rule chose to not, and then the council, I think in a pretty smooth fashion, made a recommendation and that person proposed.
And in the case where you become incapacitated, like at 5:45, what we would do is refer to your council rules, which is, if we come up with something that works for us, then you would basically start the meeting, the immediate thing that you would do is to suspend the rules, and then you would be appointing a person. But maybe you call in 15 minutes, or hopefully you're not going.
Right, call and say. Council member Fredericks. Council member Palmer.
I guess, if he make, the president makes a judgment, says this is what we're going to do, if none of the city council members say anything, it's the way we handle it. And so if I don't like what the council president says, then I would make a motion and get a second and say, I challenge that decision. Am I correct on that?
I think that's true.
So if he decided that, that Mr. Fredericks is going to be his go-to guy, and then Mr. Fredericks gets there and starts, if we don't like it, we can always make the motion to say no. But if we don't say anything, if we don't say anything, it becomes what, what, what the president said. So that's correct.
So my question is, can they do that now? If they don't like what I'm doing? A joke.
No, we can't.
No, our rules now have the process in our rules of operation. And I thought the attorney was telling us, we really can't use option one without some sort of formality to it.
Can I, can I offer a suggestion for how you might be able to use option one through other business? I mean, what says here is, a challenge we have is, this is also in your charter, which talks about during the absence of the mayor, it is the at-large council member. But then it goes on to say, or the person identified by the council. And then it goes on to say, you can't like read the whole charter in order to know what it says, um, the council member at large, or the selected council member serving as. But when it talks about the selected member earlier on, it says, as appointed by the council. And then further, it goes on to say, that at your annual meeting, you're going to set an order of succession. So I think you, if by establishing your rules, which is another section of the charter, it says you can establish your rules. If your rule was that the council, the at-large member was to say that, and/or that, and the mayor was to identify, one way of doing that, because usually you have an advanced notice, is to say, during other business, you could say, this is the person I'm appointing, and that would be an opportunity for, you know, silence means yes kind of a thing. Councilor Palmer's saying, you have to talk, we have more to talk about, about that appointment. So I don't know if that's legal. That seems like it would meet the spirit of the charter, but I don't know.
Is it the spirit of the charter, or is it a paper trail for decisions that are made?
It's both.
I think we get, I think there's a sense of where the council wants to go with this, so let's have, uh, attorney Spindler Craig administer his own, just kind of pull that together. First, you have enough to work.
Keep it simple and legal.
Good.
I was going to say, it could be legal.
All right. Moving on to, uh, voting rotation, and I'm not, I'm not sure who brought this up. Council member Palmer.
This is a, this is a bugaboo of mine, and it has been for about six years, Tom. And I listened to the 28th meeting twice, and this was never brought up.
I don't remember it.
I don't remember. How, how did this get on this list?
It was gone, I don't know.
And, and so the, the argument against doing anything differently is, is that we have a seniority system, and, and, and Mr. Keen is number one, so he gets the highest seniority, and then it goes to Palmer at number five. Where that might make a difference to you is if you're Ward Two, you have more seniority than Ward Four, which means you have more seniority than Ward Six.
This is not done, I see.
No, just on my order.
Council member Palmer.
Yeah, I don't know where it got on here, but I, again, I'll, I'll give you the, you know, before the 2019 rules were made, that sat us in Ward Order, it used to be sat in alphabetical order, and it used to be voted that way. There was a discussion in 2023 to say, we should change this to sit by, like, and I can't remember seniority now, but then it would change the voting order. But they're actually two separate things. You can talk about seating order and then voting, and, and I think you could separate them. Right now, we have them, it's the same. I, I didn't bring this up, I, I don't have a problem with it, but I've been told it's not good to have the same voting order all the time when you're doing the, and it was a much bigger thing when we were all remote, or when we were doing, everything was a roll call vote. But I, I, if anything, I, I'm more concerned, back in the time, I was more concerned about the seating order than I was about the voting order.
I'm taking that personally.
Well, it, it shouldn't be, it shouldn't be, but it was, I don't know if you remember this, because I, I think it was alphabetical, but other places do it by seniority, out from the, from the Senate.
Council member Fredericks.
I like tomatoes.
Mayor, did you have, did you wave, raise your hand?
I'm just surprised we're even discussing this, to be honest.
I think the way it came up was that someone asked me a question that was not about this, and I used it as an example of ways that other city council rules work, but that's the only thing I could think, because I don't, I do remember it coming up like two years ago, but I, I actually think.
I think it actually helps the community to know Ward One, Ward Two, Ward Three, Ward Four, and do an honor, I don't, but.
Okay, I, I don't see a lot of cachet to this one, so let's move on to the next one, which is, okay, so this is, this is a compilation of, of all of the things that I talked about at the, at our study session. I'm really good with, uh, how we've condensed this. The really key objective that I was looking for was to, on those high-impact issues that we have, six to eight a year, that, that we see that, that project at either a study session, a week before it's our regular council meeting, or at, on, on reports and recommendations, two weeks before we have to actually make the decision. It gives us an opportunity to, to, to deliberate on the issue, and to, for staff to hear our issues, concerns, and to modify the, the item if need be. It also gives the public an additional week of hearing about the issue, and then we, as the representatives, can, can have that feedback in our decision-making. So I'm, I'm very comfortable with, uh, working with staff to make sure that those high-impact issues are on our study session or council, uh, reports and recommendations. Two weeks, or at the very longest, a month before our time to vote on it. The one question that I do have on it is currently in our rules and guidelines, the city administrator sets the agenda. So making sure that we, as a council, are aware of those high-impact issues and when they're coming up, so that we then can make sure that they are on that study session or reports and recommendations. So with that, council member Palmer.
We've talked about this, but for me, if we have a study session, and then our package is out on Wednesday, and then Monday we vote on it, that makes it a little hard to get everybody to, to send their, or input into it. I think if we have a study session, and the city council says, we'd like to have the decision two meetings from now, I think that that would be helpful. That way, gives us that time to, to, to get input from other community members on what we want to do. So my vision is, if you have a study session, somebody says this is an important issue, skip the next meeting, go to the next meeting and set that up. I don't know if that's workable for you.
I mean, I think this is going to be an imperfect system, and we're going to try hard, because there's eight different ideas of what the most important item is, but.
But you could ask that during this study session.
Oh, yeah.
We can, yeah.
Council member Wall.
I think we've actually done that fairly frequently. For instance, Aaron said, we're not going to have this back for your next Monday, but it's going to be for the Monday after that. That makes great sense.
Council member Miller.
I'll just add, it, it does seem like, at least with the study session calendar, we get a preview of what's coming and when, and I hear that in some ways with the community as well, so it's not a surprise on a Wednesday what's going to be voted on on a Monday. Just, how do we build an additional lead time? I mean, whether it's one meeting, two meetings. I, I'm okay with an imperfect system, where we try something to build in a little more lead time. And it seems like issues are often already projected for certain meeting dates, that staff tell us, but it's not always clear, at least from a, maybe from a topic, but also from some of the specifics of that, knowing what's coming, what the decision is, make sure we have the time to get input, make sure that it gets picked up, you know, like immediately, particularly for the significant ones. I won't add in any attempt to define significant, I think of the apple tree in radish image that we were given last week, but.
Radishes.
Yeah.
What is that?
Other, other thoughts on this? I, I agree, I, I'm okay with the imperfect system, and I think there are also maybe issues of that, there is a hard deadline that staff has to back it up and say, you know, we can't really have this two meetings from now, it has to be 10 days. And I think, I think that's something we can just work through as, as it happens.
Yeah, I guess I would maybe just offer, I take that also as like a communication, like challenge, not challenge, but like a good kind of challenge, challenge to achieve, that when we have report and recommendation or a study session, like, make sure we have a slide that says, like, maybe where we've been and where we think the trajectory of something is going, because then that helps to, you know, you have something to go back to, to show people, like, A, maybe this wasn't even, you know, might be the first study session, but we had a bunch of community engagement or some other things, or it's related to this other topic that we've talked about 10 times, this is the next step. So kind of connecting the decisions through, through time. I, I think we've talked about that, too, so, and we can also make sure that the team is considering that, about how we're, you know, other forms of communication, letting folks know when they shifted, or, you know, maybe we anticipated a bid coming to you, and then we got the bids, and you're like, there's no way we can bring that to them. Don't have to wait until the agenda item for you to know that information.
I also do like that, that you listed out the boards and commissions, because with those, that's what we're getting. I mean, and any of us can go to Plating and Zoing, HBC, or any of these other meetings, and get that preview, and that is open to the public, and it is the same proposal that will come to us. So one that I would consider adding would be the, the DMC seat board, as, as another one that we wouldn't necessarily have to have us get a preview on it. Council member Keen.
Kind of a logistics question. I, I see this topic here, and I think I understand the discussion and sort of the malleable parts of it, like what's significant and the timing. But is there a section in our rules that talk about agenda setting? I didn't think there.
Kind of, I mean, it's not this detailed.
Yeah, because when you listed all those things, I can't think of another place where that stuff is in our rules, or that I've, like, absorbed and internalized. I, I think the agenda, I mean, just a higher level concept, that we don't have agenda, like, authority to put something on, that's what the council initiated actions are. But this is a matter of, this is us giving, or setting our rules for staff to follow, but I didn't think there's a section like that right now. Maybe there is.
I, when I was referring to agenda setting, I think there is a line in there that agendas will be set by the city administrator. I think there, there's something to that order.
And out to, and distributed by a certain point, like lead time.
Yeah.
Right. I would just observe, I, I think you're, you're both right in some respects, this really isn't a rules conversation, but still appreciate.
Yep.
The guidance and the aspiration.
Okay, that's all.
Mayor.
I'll just add a question. It's something to think about. You've specifically called out certain boards, and most of those boards are boards that have a higher authority, with the exception of the music board, which does not. And there are other boards, like Citizens Advisory on Transit, that also have decisions run by them as community members. So I wonder if it, if it should say significant items that are not previously reviewed by a city board of permission. And you could do a such as if you want, but I, I, I think we need to be cognizant that some of those are statutory, and that's one thing. Music board is not statutory, nor, nor is Citizens Advisory on Transit, and on, and on, and on. So I guess I was a little curious as to how these ones got selected, when we have others that hear proposals by the city, and that we either should just make a comment, that if it's been heard by a citizens committee, maybe it doesn't need this, but if it hasn't, then that's a different story.
Uh, council member Miller.
I appreciate the conversation, and I would add in that I think of them as the ones that do have some statutory authority to be a step in our policy generation. I, I think it's an interesting question about how we interact and hear from the music board, citizens advisory, but the other ones, right? Just the ones that don't have a step in our.
Yep.
In our process.
I think some of it is that they haven't been taking the step, because I think most of these require an annual report to council. And so, even if it's admitting that, you know, and it's something that you review on consent, probably we can get better at doing that, like, what is their view of, would you get that from the ethics commission? We try to be simple and legal. And so, we submit, in the words. I think some of this came from, actually was generated from the discussion the last time. But looking at the actual language here, it does talk about generally, it's really talking about the business agenda. And so I think there's opportunities, I think the way this will work well, because I don't know, but you.
I think the way this will work well, because I don't know, but you can articulate it well in language in the council rules, is between other business, your feedback during items of study session and/or report and recommendation or elsewhere, and the calendar, the study session calendar item, it's not on there just so I get to talk one more time. Like, it serves a purpose of, like, creating a space for the city council to say, "Hey, don't see anything on the study session calendar about this. Like, is that a topic that's going to come up?" So like that two-way communication and engagement of utilizing the different parts of your agenda to be able to get some, you know, yes, that's, this one's significant, this is the, this is a radish. I assume the radish ones are the most significant ones.
Quick versus longer term.
So, I mean, it is helpful, like, to know, "Hey, this is on my mind of concern. I think this is coming in a year and a half and that's going to, like, be here in a half a minute if we don't start getting feedback from the council about what their concerns are."
And I'm just going to restate, not all of these boards are created equal. And there are other boards who make decisions who are not listed. And I think we should be very careful.
Sure.
And music, for one, shouldn't be on there at all. Because you could make arguments on some of the others that have more of a statutory and decision-making thing. But otherwise, put them all, or, you know, anything that goes by a board. So I'm just, I'm going to be a little pinky about that, but I don't think we should ask people to work and then somehow in this document say, "These ones are important and the other ones aren't," because I don't think that's the message we want to send.
I guess what I'm saying, I don't think this is going to end up in your document.
Yeah. I don't know.
I guess I would like to see it in some fashion, whether it doesn't have the, but I think, given the fact that we've had two discussions on it, I think, and the objective is the two have significant items. And I think we're all clear on understanding what those significant items may or may not be and our role as council members to ensure that staff knows that we think this coming up in six months or two months or three weeks is a significant item. But I would like to see it reflected somewhere in there.
I guess I'm curious of first agreement because I've heard different points of view about it being in the document, but you also have a charter language to contend with with this. So depending on how it's written, like, your council rules or procedures do not talk about, like, what goes to study session or not, like, clearly. And technically, if it's in there and someone doesn't agree, they can do a point of order and they'll just suspend the rules and, like, say it shouldn't have been on there in the first place or it should have, or, I'm not saying that'll happen with certain people, but.
Okay, a question. Is study sessions in our rules and guidelines?
It's in there, but it doesn't talk about setting the agenda at all. It talks about that you will.
I mean, it seems reasonable that the council would have some desires to have certain items heard. I mean, that seems like a reasonable request. How you get to that?
Is your council initiated action process generally if it's big enough, because otherwise we're running around doing multiple different things. And then when it gets to you and it's fully fleshed, I mean, I'll just bring up the bad word again, organics, depending on how that comes forward, like, feel real uncomfortable for a council and can actually, like, if the art of the meeting isn't considered in the topic. I mean, all it says about council study sessions is council study session meetings will be available to the public by the city's official livestream and/or the city's YouTube channel as well, being broadcast, study sessions posted. And it gets to the, it's really talking about meetings because your charter talks about that you have to have business meetings. It talks about when those are. It talks about setting the agenda. Those, like, it's in the actual charter of the city.
I wonder if it, sorry.
Go ahead.
If this might not fit somewhere between 2.03A about the business agenda for each meeting will be generated, if it doesn't include a step point of.
I mean, it's going to be very general language. We can put something in there and then you'll have to agree that that's what we meant.
Yeah, and when, in my understanding of significant items are items that are already generated by projects that are happening within the staff and they are, they would naturally be on our regular council meeting agenda, but they have significant impact. Recent example would be the regional sports center. That came on our agenda on Wednesday. We made a decision the following Monday. That would be a significant item that, that greater public input or a longer glide path to that decision. And I just picked that one as an example. So it's not new items that two or more council members are trying to put on an agenda. It's items that are already being generated.
Councilmember Keen.
Yeah, I mean, I think we do have, I think Council President Schubert's trying to bring up an issue, but I'm not sure how it packages into our rules and code of conduct. It doesn't appear that we really want to have a rule. I think we're giving input to the staff that we want more lead time, but we're really not in a point where we're going to make it a rule as opposed to, we want to make sure there's some sort of cadence to decision-making that the public's aware of. And I think that, I think that should be good enough for us.
The alternative approach would be that if something appears on the Wednesday agenda, it's more disruptive, but there could be a threshold to postponing.
Like, there's all kinds of ways you can service continuing an item.
Right. But I agree that that's disruptive. And I'm also okay with a more imperfect process where we figure out more lead time. Don't necessarily write it as a rule today and see how it works.
Maybe partly to councilmember Miller's point, yes, certainly, as this conversation has evolved, an option always is to consider continuation, like putting off a decision. And that may be a complicated conversation for us to have on the dais where we're giving you the input of, "Well, actually, you can't do it because there's legal issues," or, "These are the downfalls of the land and we can talk that through and you can make a decision." There's always that option. And yes, it would just be very challenging to put this into a structure that would be helpful and meaningful, partly because that example of a complex decision that maybe felt like it was rushed in some manner was imperfect. You would have liked more time. That was maybe an example of five different reasons that made it come to you in the way that it did. Like, there were ongoing negotiations. We had matters under contract that we didn't have an ability to delay. We didn't know for sure what to present to you three weeks ahead of time in order to better inform that decision. And it's just tricky with a mix of these maybe significant decisions, trying to find that sweet spot of enough information and be able to present to you what's going to come before you in three weeks and try to get additional public input versus all of the things that are often happening in this last one, two, three weeks prior to an important decision. There's a few other complications as well, just things like quasi-judicial decisions, of course, can't be sort of previewed and then through a study session. Just a few other complications. Mayor.
I'll just say, I mean, it seems like the issue here is the council is trying to tell the staff that they would like to have more discussion earlier about things that are happening in the city, more knowledge in advance, more time to inform the community. Those are reasonable requests. And whether you need to write it down or not, or whether you have it be, and if you know something's boiling, that you ask for it to be put on the next agenda and have a vote during other business or whatever, is, you probably can, that might be a way to manage it too. But I think, Michael, the problem that we've run into is some of what you started covering, which is the decision comes before the council and they're not ready to make a decision or they're uncomfortable and the staff have come up with this grand solution, right? They're like, "Well, that's okay, but we'd like to make some tweaks." And we're told, "Oh, you have to make a decision today because of all the things that you were naming and there's no ti, and there's not a possibility of being able to say, 'I'd like to continue it.'" And that's, I think that's the downside of just using continuation as the sole solution, maybe one. But if it's something that's timely.
Yeah, no, I'm not saying we wouldn't try to do this.
Right. No, I'm just saying.
Rules, I think, that are very important.
I understand. I think staff understands the spirit of what we're looking for. And I think, I think in reading the council, council members, I think there is a strong majority that does want to see us move in this direction. I'm fine for it not to be in rules. I think we've, you've got the spirit of it. But to the mayor's point, I think there is a culture on the council of not tabling, not continuing. And it really takes a lot to be able to do that. So I also understand that it's going to take a little more kind of backing up by the staff to get to determine what these are. I trust our staff that you, in consultation with all seven, eight of us, that you will know what those are and there'll be some give and take. But I think, I think being able to get those previews, I think is going to smooth things and get greater public input, a healthier, more robust dialogue from the body here and a better product that we can more expediently pass when it finally comes to making that final decision. So I'm comfortable with where we're at if that others are. Before we go to emerging issue, are there any other rules and codes of conduct that were discussed at the last study session or others that folks want to bring up today? Councilmember Wall.
Yes, I had mentioned one that didn't make the cut and that was a reconsideration of the appointments to, of council members to boards. Just didn't make it into that list.
So I'd be interested in that. And is.
Putting councilmembers on boards?
I think.
The appointment process.
Not boards and commissions, but.
And maybe staff can more clearly address the dialogue. I think the dialogue, from what I understood, being a new council member, I, the process that we have in place now, which is the council president makes recommendations and the board, or the council then approves those or doesn't approve those. And what changed to that where you, I don't recall is.
Yeah, I think that I said something to the effect of, I thought that we placed the board president in a difficult position right off the bat, first meeting. And there were some difficult decisions. And the previous iteration of the appointment process would have negated that uncertainty. And I think we would have moved forward a little bit more expediently and without the hiccup that we had.
Councilmember Wall.
And so I had an old policy and I read it and then said how we did our committee assignments. And it got changed and I went back to listen to the meeting that we had in this room and nobody spoke about it. And so somehow that section got changed. So that's the reason I didn't know anything about it. And just briefly, the way we did it in the past was you go by seniority and you go one through seven or six, and then you go from six back to one to get your first choice, your second choice, your third choice to fill out your committees. That just seemed to need to be a better system than just saying, you know, the council president picked these people and why. And you go, "Wow." It makes it more difficult. So to me, the old way of doing it is you go from seniority one through six back to, back up to, you know.
And just to clarify, councilmember, that change was made by the previous council, correct?
It was, but not, not a discussion, there was no discussion about it. It was almost kind of like our discussion about.
There was discussion in this room. I don't want to negate you.
No, there was not. I deliberately went back to listen and there was no discussion about it. So there was on the 28th when you said you were confused on how to do it.
Okay.
On the 28th. But not, not the two years ago. But what happened and it just being blunt about it is we had a very difficult meeting that one and we were just wanting to get what we wanted done, done in the board.
Okay, so currently, currently the process is that the council president makes recommendations. There are some guidelines, but it's shifting, using those rankings and then presenting it to the council to make any changes or, and, and councilmember, while I was not in any difficult, even though that was a meeting, I was fine with the decision that the council made. Is there interest in changing the process that we currently have?
Yeah, I would have interest in revisiting the process prior to 23.
I would also.
I know, I've heard the same thing councilmember Palmer talked about with seniority and things. I'm not sure if those were council rules versus conventions and the way things were done.
So there was an actual council rule. I would not say that it was written in a way that was as digestible as what was put into the packet for the prior discussion on April 28th. But the way that it worked before, I think that actually changed in 2021. I don't think it was 2023. But it was removed, it doesn't matter because it changed. Remove, what was removed was appointment by rotation of council member. And this was like this many words, like half a page before. Removed appointment by rotation of council members by years of service, and this is where it gets confusing. Then reverse order for the next rotation until all positions are filled. So I'm not make sure the interpretation of what that means, but up to the council. And then, and then from there, priority was given to the lower numbered ward if members had years of equal service. So there's a lot of different things that needed to come into play. I mean, one could argue that that means that, I mean, if you have a, I'm not saying this is what would happen, but based on how it was written, you might say, like, if everybody picked four, if you have a council of four different people, that none of those people are appointed anything.
Especially if they're in more.
So, but still, that recommendation comes to council and you could have had a similar but different discussion if people didn't like the rotation and the picks. I mean, it doesn't negate that the city council still is the final body that's acting on it. But it used to be appointment by, so you would be saying, like, "I want something," but you'd have to prioritize the wants of the members that have, based on their years of service. And then, and then, again, not exactly sure what this meant, but the next rotation, so is it the next, like, if you pick the three people that have seniority, I assume this means the next rotation, like, is they don't get their number two, then you go in reverse order. I guess that's where I'm not exactly sure. I'll back out of that. The reverse order, the next rotation until all positions are filled. I don't know exactly what that means, but that's what was written in more words than that. And then if there's a tie, like, say years of service, then you go to the lower ward. So Patrick mentioned that one.
So just to clarify, so if, under that system, it is incumbent upon the council president to use that mechanism?
To do that, yes.
And then bring a slate forward and then the council can do what they want?
Do this work, yes.
Okay, so.
Well, the president would consider the ranking offered by, and if there was a conflict, then would go to the system. I can read it. I've got it right in front of me. If anybody wants to hear the exact words. words.
And I'm not, I don't actually care what you do. Like, I just, I just literally don't know what, what it means when it says the next rotation is reverse order until I don't, I've never had to apply that.
I guess my interpretation of that, of the way that it was done, I believe in the past was you went from highest seniority down to numbers, number six, and then went from number six to five, four, three, two, and went back up so that, so that you get your best chance at getting the one. Where the difficulty becomes then is, let's just assume three people wanted to the RPU board. Now, now who gets the RPU board? It would be the number one seniority person. And then you would go down, so if it were me, you'd take my second one, which might be something different, and then go down that way. And, I mean, you might have been uncomfortable on, on the first day, but it was uncomfortable for, for people who didn't want to, to agree with the book. So, and there was some difficulty with that. So I just think having a system that works better is, and that's why I brought up previous this meeting, the four of you who got elected, the three of you, the second ward, fourth ward, sixth ward is how the seniority works. Fair or not, but that's, that's how that works.
So I, I guess if we are going to discuss it, then we're discussing, you know, how much seniority should have in those decisions. And I think a council that has had a shift of four new members four years ago and now four year, now this year, and you have a majority of new council members, I wonder weighing seniority so strongly is what we want as a city, I guess. And that, I'm not saying, but council member one.
I'll choose to use a different word and I'll use experience as opposed to seniority. That's someone who has served, Patrick probably didn't want to use his name, but someone who has served well in RPU, I think that experience serves us very well, quite apart from seniority.
I won't pick on the city council, but in the legislature, there are horrific council or, or chairs, and they only get it because they have been there forever and they are inept at running meetings and making decisions. And so it can go either way. I'm not, I'm not talking about anybody any of you know. Well, some of you have been around a couple of months, but not anyone alone.
Council member Keen.
So I, I'm kind of surprised this is coming up because I was still looking at, the key thing to me is however you get to that meeting, the council still decide, it still has the ability to decide. So we're just talking about how we get into the room. And I guess I wasn't paying enough attention to that. I, my view is that in the way the rules read to me, it says the presiding officer will nominate and the council will decide. So how we get there, to me, is secondary to that key thing of how, you know, that we decide through consensus slash majority.
And I appreciate that council member Keen and I also appreciate the transparency, council member Wall, that, that it may have been difficult for some members of the body, but to council member Keen's point, we got to the place where this entire council decided this, these are our appointments, and I think we moved, moved on very respectfully to, to, to that. And so...
The system worked.
In my view, the system worked. But we can readdress it if members want to have more of a seniority lottery.
Well, I'll just add, I mean, I think, I mean, not to pick on Mayor Norton, but thinking also of our county commission, people come into this role with differing public experience and other experience. I think the system can work and did, and we can have more flexibility under a simpler survey, council president organize a slate of nominations and coordination, and then bring us to the meeting and then we have discussion. I think locking us into one order or reverse it, it's like we're perhaps adding rules that allow us ultimately flexibility in considering everybody's qualifications and experience, that we can ultimately have that discussion at the meeting.
Do you want me to put this in what we put... Two things that I'm not sure get to five, but that's what the meeting's for, so extend the conversation about council to decide, but in this case, your council rules require five of the seven of you agreeing. So we'll see where it goes with the two minute, three minute, and I heard if we bring three minute, there needs to be 30 minutes, now 21, and so we'll see where that lands in your actual vote and then, I guess I'm not even really hearing four people that want me to put this on, but this is the art and the science of significant, right?
I'm only hearing two people, so I just don't think that's...
Why isn't it a bigger way to hear?
So, is, if anyone else wants to speak on the appointment process, I...
Process worked, it worked, like you said, worked itself out this year. I don't see a reason to change it.
All right. I think, thank you for being transparent, council member Wall. I, I see what you see.
I'm a nice county.
All right. Anything else that, rules and guidelines?
I'll just add, I did look it up because I was curious about the accommodation and comment, and our open comment participation sheet says currently virtual participation is not available. The public hearing one says currently no virtual participation is available. So if there is an accommodation process to engage, I just, I would love for that to be clear in those documents what options there are, because that's how they currently read.
In the packet or where?
If, I was looking at the meeting packet, so I pulled it up.
I think there's a document that we have that's on our website that we just need to add.
Okay, well, in the like guidelines, if you look up the packet and you look at open meeting, open comment or public hearing, it both say currently no virtual participation. It doesn't mention anything of accommodation.
I saw one that did, I'm on.
So it might be in a separate place, but in the packet.
Yeah, which is very helpful.
Language, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
And, and this is probably not rules and procedures, but I think to the mayor mentioning the other boards and commissions, I would love to know how we best interact and hear from, and I think about the municipal consent process, I think there are boards and commissions that maybe were even engaged, and that wasn't clear to me, how that recommendation or their perspective was even represented in their service to the community. And I just want to honor the work that our board and commission members do and just make sure that we hear from them in appropriate ways.
So seeing any other, council member Keen?
Yeah, and this isn't for editing right now, but just in this discussion, coming into COVID and getting out of COVID, we had done some major changes to our meeting things and that's part of our rules, regular meeting study sessions, things like that. In 2023, I think we really did cut back in a lot of the amount of time that we did meet with two study sessions a month and two business meetings. I guess I'm, I'm just mentioning that because from my perspective or my arc of six years, we used to be together as a council, probably in the range of three to four hours more per month. It's something we've gotten away from and I'm just pointing out, it might be fine, it's probably, our time is probably more, better used tightly, but at the same time, there is less time being used and those are things that are controlled within our rules. So just heads up to my peers that it's something that used to be different. It seems to be working the way it is right now, but I've also heard things about, like, that we haven't had enough time to ruminate on certain things. So I just bring it up because it is part of that same document with the rules.
Council member? I think I agree with you, council, council member Keen. I think it seems to be working well now, but I appreciate you sharing that for as, as we ramp up and as the city runs on all cylinders and we as council members want to have that time and we also want to have our, our members of the public to be able to keep up with us, it's something to think about as far as do we need more time?
I'll say, I appreciate that this meeting was added because I don't think we have time in our study sessions upcoming to have a three hour discussion about rules and procedures. So I like the flexibility of whether that gets added as a guaranteed initial one. We've also had some fairly full study sessions recently where we've had to cut topics where there was perhaps more active discussion to move on to the next. So I don't want to suggest something on your schedule today, but I would just agree with my colleagues' comments.
Right, yes, and you. And it would be helpful to, if we aren't, even if we aren't changing anything, like, it's hard to get this group and or the presenters together on, like, we kind of all hold our Monday, but like, and I know that part of the change was people, it was challenging to like have two different meeting modes in your brain, like 3:30, like, is there, is Monday an option and if it is an option, is earlier, like, maybe it's not at 3:30, maybe it's morning, take a break, reengage in your council meeting. So Monday, I think is a great day to have it, a terrible day to have it, but to try to actually get the people in the room and have the eight voices at the table and the people that need to present the item is challenging if it's on any other days than Monday or we're adding it ad hoc. I think it's less challenging to add it to a Monday, but it presents a different challenge I think for councils sometimes of being in two modes. So not that I have any answer today, but like, thinking about, like, is there a time on a Monday if we were, because the intent of changing that, we said we still could add back, you know, a 3:30 on a Monday. And if it's for one item, maybe that's fine, but if it's three hours of discussion, you had your council meeting starting already. So you were incapacitated because you were in a different meeting that everyone else was in. So it's, that would just be if you could put your thinking caps on about that, I mean. We hadn't been able to make today work, there was like no day that worked for all of you to be here until I think August, maybe July.
I want to get to, so emerging issue, is this something that we should kind of parking lot until the governor signs it and we see it and then there will be some kind of changes that will be proposed to our rules and guidelines that incorporates this new statute exactly?
I mean, parking lot, I mean, it could be a total parking lot, like, if you don't want to, if you have any feedback, I think we would be grateful for it because having, especially from a council perspective, like, your ability to join remotely and participate changes your meeting.
We've got to, council member Palmer.
So the question is, is the government, let's assume the governor signs it, does it mean we have to do that?
It doesn't.
It means our rules, we have to say we want to do that, is that correct?
You couldn't be more restrictive, but you can't be more restrictive.
Council member one.
I would be reticent to open up remote participation. We've had a recent case in Minnesota, the county commissioner who, diminishing ability, who was openly coming into meetings from his care center and it led to a lawsuit between his wife and him. And another one a couple of years ago, a city council member who chose to spend four or five months in Arizona. I just think we're asking for mischief.
Council member Keen.
Uh, yeah, I, again, I'm glad to hear that, you know, we can be more restrictive. I guess I wasn't sure when I, when I saw this coming on. I watched this debate at lead of Minnesota cities and it really is in support of these smaller cities that have five person council and one or two that go away in the winter and they really couldn't do business. It was, it was a logistics mess for them. But I think, I think from our perspective, I think we want to put some restrictions on it, you know, number of times it could happen, reasons why it would happen, just to keep it to be to the, you know, that, you know, if we have 26 business meetings in a year, if it happened three times, that would probably be okay, but much more. I believe, and maybe attorney spin look right, I mean, if someone's remote, do we have to do everything, roll call?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, these are the kind of things that just, and, and you know, you might think, oh, we already do a lot, we do like 1/50th of our votes right now is roll call. And you start doing all those, it's just going to drag you out. It's very inefficient, never mind for the council, but if any public trying to watch or try to participate, it's very drag, hard to do.
Council member Miller.
I was just going to add, I think within reason, I think this additional flexibility is great. I mean, not having to notice the public location, right, where someone is, seems common sense. I'll, I'll be away, I'll miss the, the first meeting in August because of travel. I mean, to have that, I don't know what's going to be on that agenda, but if there's something that's very important, right, I think there are reasons that we could have limited structure for remote participation when appropriate. If that seems like a very straightforward agenda, I would gladly, you know, be away. But I think it just depends on the context and I think having, you know, somewhere in the three or fewer options during the year where you can join remotely for important issues.
And participate.
And participate, yes.
And that's not per person. If you had it three times a year on a council, that would be enough. If it was three times...
Sure, that's what I thought you were saying.
Yeah, yeah, I, when he just said three times, I thought, oh, no.
Oh, I don't know. Howard.
But contemplating, right. Mayor.
Well, I was just going to say, there have been times when an item comes up that I appreciate being able to weigh in on. I do not have a vote and so should I be able to participate remotely, other than just in listening mode, it would not require any roll call. So we could think about that on occasion.
Just briefly, usually we can be more restrictive on a mix of items. This one might be a little bit interesting. There just may be some L and C review and some additional things that maybe haven't been completely thought through as to what this would look like, could look like, should look like and whether that can be modified by your rules. So partly to your original question, yes, I think when, if it's signed, when it's signed, we will have some problems solving to do, it may involve rules adjustment. Well, for sure, rule adjustments. All right. Anything else? Our next study session?
The next study session is somewhere here. It is June 29th and we have, as of conference members, facilities condition assessment update, big survey document, UDC downtown parking and parking developer assistance policy, so two sort of similar but different discussions about parking and then the 2025 legislative session update. So hopefully, you may not have one to talk about, if there is a session, we'll have, you know, more narrow to talk about it. So we have that and then your next one after that is June 23rd, also the council chambers, we're looking closer to August time for these kinds of items that we still need to get delivered for council chamber update. It would be your moving over to this room for more of your regular meetings, so we'll be updating this back, it's closer. So on the 23rd, you have the audit, most exciting things beyond budget, and then the budget updates on, so more information about the CIB and that part of your budget and then outside agencies, a little bit more deeper dive into the outside agencies.
All right. Any, anything else? If not, we are adjourned.